Evening, everyone. The time is 6:02 PM. It is Tuesday, December 5th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Next up is executive session. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose, purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes, acquisition of property for transportation improvements and related infrastructure, convening to executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code, Project Two-Step, Project Pixel, Hot Pursuit, and Heat Stroke. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7 o'clock PM, the Tuesday, December 5th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Okay, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor Pro Tem would like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes. We've got quite a few here for the special meetings for November 14th. And we also have the minutes, regulations for the same regular meeting on November 15, 2023, special meeting minutes for November 20th, 2023, including the city council regular meeting for 2023 as well.
So total of five. All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by a council member, Parsley, that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. First up is Neil Stigall.
Well, actually, speaking to the TERS that's on the agenda tonight, and have some comments related to that, I'm glad the council paid so much attention to what's happening on the east side, the northeast side through this development at 301 BB, the Caraway tract. And I really want to recognize the staff for the tremendous amount of work they put in on this project. Nevertheless, there are some comments I would make outside of zoning or anything that I've ever participated in as a zoning commissioner. And that would regard be regards to the overall impact of a TERS on the finances of the city. We know that the tax revenue captured by TERS remains committed to the TERS and not allowed for use in the broader community for decades, really. And the revenue capture can have negative effects. Other things can be neglected as a result of that capture. We have to also be careful of the impact on school and property taxes and make sure that the revenues are not diverted from other community projects. And since usually TERS requires an issuance of bonds, taking on debt for the long term in the case of 30 years or so, to pay for the sustained project, we have to be careful about what the implications are. Many commercial projects do not have a robust lifespan of 20 to 30 years but are degraded by changes in tenancies when large box stores close or relocate due to economic circumstances. This creates zombie developments with fewer stores and reduced tax revenues. We're looking at issuing a bond debt in the worst bond market since the Civil War. The indebtedness is fraught with interest rate and credit rating risk. City solvency could be impacted over the life of this debt. I would, if possible, recommend a shorter term for the TERS and its debt obligations to perhaps 20 to 25 years if possible. I would recommend that no Chapter 380 grants or loans be made for this project past what would be offered through bonds, so nothing out of operational funds. I don't want to see our finances compromised in that respect. The development of the parcel also has benefits of the planned unit development with a clause that allows them to change some usages of the parcel after 10 years, giving the developer the power to make changes with which we may not agree while we still bear the debt on what may be diminishing returns. This allows the developer flexibility at our expense, in my view. Our governance and regulatory power should, would be diminished and our financial status perhaps compromised. Additionally, I would make a comment regarding this TERS being connected to a PUD, that there's a clause in the PUD ordinance which causes the PUD, gives the PUD power to prevail over the development agreement pertaining to land use, site development regulations, or land development in the case of a conflict between the two. Why would we write or agree to two documents which would be conflicted in any respect?
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Tracy Scheel.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, my name is Tracy Scheel. I come to you, I come before you tonight as a resident of Kyle who had a wonderful time Friday night. I just want to come up here and say thank you to the council, but also thank you, Mariana and her staff, for a beautiful, beautiful light display at the City Square Park. It was phenomenal. It was enjoyable. It was just amazing. So I just wanted to come up here and say, first of all, thank you to the staff of our Parks Department for all of their hard work, and also to the council for budgeting, because I know that is a pretty getting up there in the line item. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I encourage any resident anywhere to come and visit our park. It is a very beautiful site. And also Lake Kyle, because it is, they put a lot of work into that one as well, and that's a beautiful little walking trail. So come out and see our lights and hey, go into some of the neighborhoods, because some of the residents are putting on some pretty good light displays as well. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Those are all the citizen comments forms I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anyone in the council have any desire to move any of the items around? Councilor Heiser?
Yeah, 18 and 22, please.
You're wanting to move them where?
To the top.
Does anybody have any objections? Councilor Parsley?
Item 19.
All right. 18, 19, and 22 to the top, do you want? We're just going to flip the meeting?
The impact fee one?
Yep, that was it.
That was 19? Okay, we're good.
All right, next up, agenda item number seven, recognition of library board member Gracie Rocha for six years of service to the library board. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor, council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager. I'm here in the stead of Colleen Tierney, our library director. She wasn't able to be here this evening, so it's my honor and my pleasure to recognize Gracie Rocha for her six years serving on our library board. And I'd like to ask our Assistant Director for Library Services, Jessica McCart, to join me up here, and Gracie to come up and join us up here. Gracie, six years is a long time to serve on one of our boards. Your contributions have been many, and your sacrifices probably just as, just as many. We want to thank you tremendously for the work that you've done. The staff has put together a present for you to recognize your service.
This is from all of the staff as a token of our appreciation for everything you've done for us. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you. Wow, all right.
And you guys aren't here to listen to me talk, so Gracie, anything you'd like to say?
I know, six years is a long time to be on a board, but it was like Paul would just say, I've asked for an extension, and it was granted. So there've been several councils and members of the council that I've been, that have gone through, and a lot of board members on the library that I've seen through, but it was a pleasure. It's the development of the library and the people and the programs that are contributed to the community. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Gracie.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number eight, approve a resolution of the city of Kyle.
I just want to say, Gracie, thank you for all that you've done for our city. Thank you for the community of St. Anthony's that you do so much for as well. You're definitely an inspiration for everyone in this community, what it is to give back. Just thank you from the bottom of my heart and of all the diocese here. Thank you.
I was going to add to that. I just wanted to say thank you for your services to the city. Definitely, the library is one of my favorite departments. You guys have the best programming that I feel like we can have besides the Parks Department. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for your contributions to, to our city.
All right, anyone else? Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. All right, next up is agenda item number eight, approve a resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas to make an appointment to the Alliance Regional Water Authority Board of Directors to replace Derek Turley for an unexpired term expiring April 2024. Mr. Hendricks.
For the record again, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager. It's musical ACMs and direct department heads tonight. Before you is consideration to appoint a replacement member to the ARWA board. Derek Turley has left the city of Kyle, and he was on that board. So currently, we have Assistant City Manager Amber Lewis and Tim Sanford, who's our Water Wastewater Division Manager. So we have three seats on that board, so we're a seat short. We'd like to ask the council to appoint a third member. You can see on your screen right now all the entities that are involved in ARWA, including Kyle, and everybody knows that this is our future major, future water source. The only requirements to be on the board is 18 years of age and a resident of the territory located in the authority, so that's to be a member of Kyle. Your options are to appoint the mayor or council member to the board, appoint a city of Kyle employee, a resident, or you can table or postpone the item till a future date.
Jerry, do you know if there are other elected officials on that board from other jurisdictions?
I don't know.
Amber does, but she's...
Amber does, she's not here.
Tracy, do you want to...
I think there are.
No, I was just wondering who, so we could have a sense of the dynamic that's there.
Tracy Scheel, for the record, when I was on ARWA before, Jane Houston has been on it, other council members from other cities, and I, and other presidents of the Board of Trustees for some of the other SUDs have, are on it.
Okay. Well, the broader point I was trying to make is that there's definitely precedent for having it elected, so if that was the desire of the council, do you know when, when they meet, Jerry? It's a, it's a meeting during the day or in the early afternoon, like on a Wednesday.
There's going to be two other elected officials currently on the board.
Okay.
It's the fourth Wednesday of every month at 3:00 PM.
So sometimes I think it's in Kyle, sometimes it's in San Marcos and other places. Obviously, water being a big concern, I think from a technical standpoint with Tim and Amber on the board, it makes sense, but it's a, it's a tough time to meet. But it would be good, I think, for us to have a, a political voice there as well if somebody was interested.
Would, can we leave it open to see if anybody is interested?
You want to take some time?
Maybe, when do we need to fill it so to see if anybody, if there's interest from the, from a resident or an employee? I'm not opposed to having an elected council member on there.
Well, we could easily put someone technical from staff to make sure our interests are represented. Brian, do you have a recommendation or a thought?
I, I think if it was going to be a staff member, I'd recommend myself to be on the board or an elected official. I think those are the, really the two options that make the most sense. We have some of the technical representation already there, so I think either the city manager or someone from the council would be ideal.
If I could make a recommendation, if we wait till after the runoff, and then when we have a full diocese, new, new diocese, we can maybe bring that back.
Is there any issue with that, Jerry?
We can also look at the schedule and see if there's a council member that, that does, that would be able to serve. Obviously, it's up to April, correct?
Yes, sir.
So they would only be serving for just four months, correct?
What are the times? I'm sorry, I didn't capture it.
Wednesday, 3:00.
Fourth of Wednesday, 3:00 PM.
One, one Wednesday afternoon a month. They're pretty technical meetings. I was on the board before Tracy for a little while, but it's a lot, so.
Yeah. Will we bring him back?
All right.
We can bring him back to the next meeting.
If nobody objects, we'll just table this for now, we'll put it back on the, a future agenda and make a decision at that time.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, agenda item number nine, approve a resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas to make appointments for one primary and one alternate voting representative to the 2024 Campo Technical Advisory Committee.
Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager, one more time. This is another board appointment, this time it's for the Campo Technical Advisory Committee. You can again appoint city manager, assistant city manager, director, or assistant director of public works, director, assistant director of transportation, or director, assistant director of planning. This is one primary and one alternative member from representing the city on this board.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. And just as a reminder or refresher, the, we do have one representative on the Campo Board serving, that is, that is me at this time. The Technical Advisory Committee is a little bit differently, functions a little different, but in the past, Amber and Leon have been on that advisory committee. I will say that I do have interest in serving in that way, too, just because I've been really focused on Campo and want to be more focused on Campo over the next few years, and could devote the time to be there and help be an emissary for the city of Kyle and Kyle's interests. So I've discussed it with Amber and Leon, and they think it would be fine for Amber and myself to serve in that capacity. And I wanted to present that to the council and get your thoughts on what you wanted to do, or if that was okay with y'all.
Unless anybody else wants it, I think I'd make, I'd have an...
If you've been serving on it already, sir, then, then by all means, you should know.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the mayor as the primary and Amber Schmitz as the alternate for city of Kyle to represent our interests on the Campo Technical Advisory Committee. Our motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Rizzo?
Yeah, Mayor, so you are going to be serving on this board if, if we're, we vote for it. Who's your alternate on the Campo Board right now for the position you currently hold?
I do not, it was Councilor Ellison, who I think was the last named alternate. So, and, and that's actually a really good point, because in the event that I can't go, we, normally what I do is send a proxy to someone else in the region, someone like Debbie Inglesby, for example, who's there, and so she will carry my vote. But if y'all would prefer to have somebody in an, in a proxy position where if I can't go, you go, that's perfectly good, because the more people at Campo paying attention to what's going on, the better.
I definitely have gotten a big interest in all the infrastructure coming around it, so I definitely would like to be considered for that proxy position.
Okay. Well, it's not posted for the proxy, but if you want, I'll bring it back.
But we're having discussions right now in Campo, so that's why I brought it up.
We just can't take that vote, I don't think.
Correct.
Unless, can we, Paige? Since it's not posted for a proxy for the regular Campo Board seat, can we make that vote now, or do we have to bring it back on a future agenda?
Just bringing it back.
All right, okay. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Right. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is the consent agenda. It's pretty small, three items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say or do on this consent agenda? Councilor Bradshaw?
Yes, for item 12, my name is not on the resolution, which I understand, but I want to make sure that it doesn't exclude me from any meetings that happen between now and the 19th for the task force.
So item 10, I'd like to pull that, Mayor.
Okay.
Are we going to address the other items before the consent agenda, or not?
If you want. If you want to wait on consent and...
That's up to, no, I don't care.
Okay. I don't think it excludes you, so.
Okay.
We good on that?
Yeah, I think that's the, we were trying to put in place a resolution going forward, you know, after the 19th, but I think Ashley, Ms. Bradshaw's been serving, so we'll go ahead and continue to have her in any meetings that occur between now and the 19th. I think that's the desire.
All right. You said number 10?
Correct.
Oh, Councilor Rizzo. All right, we're going to pull item number 10. Does anybody want to make a motion on 11 and 12?
I'd like to go and make a motion to approve a consent agenda items number 11 and 12.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve agenda items 11 and 12. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion.
Just wanted to thank Harper for, for answering the emails, questions I sent them. Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number 10, a resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas approving a multiple-use agreement between the city of Kyle and Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of installing automated license plate readers cameras in the right-of-way, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing open meetings and other related matters. This item is sponsored by Chief Barnett. Councilor Rizzo, do you have a specific question you want to ask?
Yeah, Chief, if you wouldn't mind coming up. And I may apologize, I'm fairly new back to council, so there's some questions when they first approved these that I wanted to just clarify for some of the residents who've asked me. What is the purpose of the cameras? What is the sole purpose for them?
Sole purpose would be to reduce or eliminate or prevent criminal activity in the community of Kyle. As you may recall, back during the summer, the city council authorized the use of the automated license plate reader program. So we have a few that are already deployed out in the community. The item before you tonight is simply to authorize us to enter into the agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation so that we can place some of this equipment within their right-of-way. That keeps us from placing the equipment so far off the roadway that it's ineffective, and to place it in roadways where it can be more beneficial. But to answer your question, it is to prevent, reduce, or otherwise help us to prevent crime and have a positive impact in our community.
I know a lot of this is going to be on officer discretion. What, what reassurances that we can give the public that this isn't going to be used as a tool to maybe hurt those that are barely struggling or getting by?
Yeah, so the primary purpose in the way that we're going to use these license plate readers is they're going to alert us when a vehicle enters or passes one of these systems, maybe enters into our community on certain roadways or through our community in a stolen vehicle, a vehicle that is the subject of an amber alert, the subject of a silver alert, blue alert, all of the different warning systems that we have in place in Texas where we, we all get the messages on our phone and we're asked to look for a vehicle for a certain reason. This system will automatically alert our dispatch center and our on-duty officers that that vehicle is in a certain location in the community. We can dispatch officers to that general area in hopes to find the vehicle. I can tell you, for example, in the few that we already have deployed that are not in the Texas dot right-of-way, we were able to get them off the roadway enough. We've already recovered several stolen vehicles, and we think that certainly has an impact on crime in our community.
Definitely. And moving forward, are we going to be getting, will the council and city be providing a report on these, the system that's implemented?
Absolutely, sir. Once we get it fully implemented and all the units are deployed, we can run reports and we can provide that to you so that you can see this, these successes that we've had, and how we're deploying them, the locations, the number of hits, we call them, that means you get a stolen vehicle that passes in front of one of these cameras. You can see all that information that we're doing and, and provide that to you for review.
Definitely. I, I look forward to seeing that, because you know, if this really is something that's going to help deter or even help solve, it's going to be important when it comes to crime. And having that data can help us support even maybe something further in the future, or if we've got to redirect, it would be help as well. But I, I really like that we're going to begin to report on this, and I, I love the, that you had something you pointed to that was going to really make a, that just made a difference in what just happened here in the city of Kyle. So I appreciate that as well, and thank you for answering those questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, thank you. I'm in full support of this. The reason why is, yes, it is going to help deter crime in certain areas, but also, I understand from a privacy issue that there's a lot of concerns of that, you know? It's controversial, you know, in that sense. However, just seeing a news story yesterday on ABC News where there's a serial criminal right now that's on a crime spree, they were able to track his vehicles and his location with one of these. And they call it precision policing or something like that, to where they're actually, actually able to track these vehicles in a specific time in the area, and they can zoom in and see where it's at, and, and help solve the crimes, and actually look at it in a sense to where if we do have, knock on wood, if we ever have a critical incident here, let's say the, the robbery that happened over there at Geddes, if we had something like that in place, you never know, we could be able to have some kind of lead on that. So we have to look beyond just the comfort zone on that. We have to look at it as not only just prevention, but also as our city continues to grow, we're going to have these unfortunate situations. And we've got to be able to have the tools, the, the new modern technology to be able to help you guys in, in your fight to be able to bring these criminals to justice.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item, consent to agenda item number 10.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, that we approved you to item number 10. I'm not a, the biggest fan of the LPRs, but if we're going to use them, let's put them in the right-of-way and get good pictures. Why not? So, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is, y'all want to wait on the public hearing and just get on to these other items? All right. Next, agenda item number 18, receive a report from the Sportsplex Task Force and consider a recommendation for the selection of a firm to prepare a design for the project.
So, Mayor, I'll be addressing this item for the council. So we did have a process that we put in place for this, can you guys hear me, the Sportsplex?
I don't think it's working.
Oh.
Oh, maybe.
Is that better?
Yes.
A little bit better. I'll try to speak up. So we did have, for the Sportsplex, some discussion with the task force about selecting a design firm to begin that process, to look at making some improvements to that area. We released an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, we received 10 responses to that. From that 10, group of 10 responses, the committee then looked at identifying four firms that would come in for interviews. Those formed, firms were all highly qualified, and they came in for in-person interviews. The two top-ranked firms were Walter P. Moore and Stantec. Walter P. Moore was the highest overall firm rated in terms of points, 492 versus 483 from the committee. However, Stantec received the support of four of the six members on the task force committee. So for each, again, each of these firms are highly qualified, we think each would do a good job. Each of them can be selected by the council and recommended by the task force for the council for consideration. So for tonight, we're asking the task force to make a recommendation forward to the council and the council to direct us to begin entering into negotiations for a contract and then bring that back to the council for consideration.
All right, does anyone have any thoughts? Councilor Heiser?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I feel like it's important that the, the group be, the majority of the voices in the group be represented in the, in the outcome of this decision, and so I would like to make a motion to recommend Stantec be the firm that we hire to work with us on the Sportsplex project.
Aye.
All right, motions by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilor Bradshaw, that we award the contract to Stantec. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Parsley, sorry.
Thank you. So, I really appreciate you guys bringing us, you know, to the rest of the council members that we are now in the task force, updates about what's going on with the Sportsplex. Is there any way that we, the rest of us, could see what the prior projects that these firms have done in the past? I would like to see what they have done in, you know, in other cities, if they have created any other Sportplex, what kind of architectural standards do they have, just for our references? I know that we don't vote because we're not a part of the task force, but I would like to see the qualifications of each firm that was present during, giving a presentation to you guys.
Sure. We'll be glad to share all four of those with you, all the materials that they provided to us. We'll be glad to share that with the council.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilor Zuniga.
Yes. Thank you to the members on the task force. When I was looking at these presentations and the, I noticed that the Walter P. Moore was the higher scorer. I looked through the slides and I don't have all the details, but it looked to me like they were doing a very good job with the water diagram, the reuse water and combining the natural with what we're looking for. So, I thought that that's why we, it was scoring the highest. But if I look at the Stantec presentation, it doesn't seem to incorporate that water imported part of it. So, is there something there that I'm missing? Because obviously, we're trying to conserve, reuse it and have these nice green, green areas up there. So, that's why I like the Walter P. Moore. But am I seeing, did I see something wrong?
Councilor Heiser.
In these presentations?
So, Miguel, each firm had 30 minutes to present and time management was not necessarily our strong suit during this, during the meeting. And so, there were things that weren't put in the presentation that were addressed by each firm via questions that were asked by task force members. So, that is something that was brought up in conversation and something that I feel comfortable enough with my motion to move forward with Stantec.
Mayor Protim.
Okay. Since you had limited time on that, between Moore and Stanford, what was the top three that caught your eye on this motion versus the other two? What was, what key factors that this person, this actually company would feel that would bring forward the contract on that end? What were some of the things that caught your eye versus the other three?
Are you asking fair?
Yes.
Sure. I'm just pulling up my notes here.
You don't mind.
One of the things is they participated in the TERs, the creation of the TERs, which is where the Sportsplex exists. So, I think just having familiar knowledge with that is important for a partner to be collaborating on such an important project for us. The other thing would, is something Miguel brought up that they talked about verbally, which was water and how they would address the floodplain on the east side of 1626. That was another major issue that I wanted to hear everyone discuss because it is, it takes up space in our overall, the overall acreage of land we have. And the vision for the project, it seemed like they had an understanding with very little access to information of what our expectations were for, for the presentations.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Something that I want to add to it is the energy level was really there. The excitement for the project seemed to be across the board. They actually had one member there that got us all excited and we were really, his energy really fed on the group. And I think he was a big part of it. He's worked on a lot of projects throughout the United States and you can see his passion in what he does. So, can't think of his name. Do you remember the guy in the cap? Can't think of his name. I forgot his name, but he was very energetic.
Probably here.
Definitely, his energy definitely, you will see it on the project, I promise you.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's good. That's kind of what we wanted, that's kind of what I wanted to know. And I think maybe also Ms. Parsley was, Councilmember Parsley was like, what projects did this company or this develop, this firm bring forth in other cities compared to the other three? And what were, what were some of your positive notes from the task force? I mean, these are questions that we're going to ask. If you're recommending this, this firm versus the other two, as task force members, you know, that are involved, it's a matter of getting an understanding of what was the top three or the top five of why you're drawing to this specific development.
Councilor Bradshaw.
Can we have them come forward to answer the questions about the projects in the community?
Certainly. It's council's discretion.
Good evening. My name is Martin Bolinato. I'm senior principal with Stantec Consulting Services. I'm also the landscape architecture and planning discipline lead for our Texas, New Mexico, and Arizona teams. With me, we have Colt Yorick, who's the project manager that was identified in our qualifications, as well as Rebecca Leonard with Lionheart Places, who was one of our subconsultants in our qualifications package.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, it's just kind of like you've probably heard the conversations we were having back and forth, like what projects that have you done in the past in other cities and that you had brought forward and something that we can know a little bit more about what your firm has done.
Right. Well, just a brief introduction on Stantec. So, Stantec is notably a top 10 global design firm. We have over 400 office locations, publicly traded to New York Stock Exchange, Canada Stock Exchange. We've been established since 1954. We are the largest landscape architecture firm in the United States with over 300 landscape architects. We also have our own sports design group internally in that in the last five years, we have completed over 30 sports and recreation projects in Texas alone, you know, at all different scales, varieties, and levels. Most recently, kind of around, around the neighborhood, we recently were the prime consultant, the lead landscape architect for Bee Creek Sports Complex that we've been working on since inception, all the way to the grand opening back in June. That was a $24 million sports complex that was completed by Travis County with a total of five synthetic fields. And grand opening day and that first weekend, there was already 76 different games being played on those sports fields. In addition to that, we've done a lot of various stadiums and ISD work, including in Hayes County, Bastrop County, and a number of other projects. In addition to that, we've also done nationwide projects, including McGregor Square, which is home of the Rockies, where we turned parking lots into these mixed-use environments that really, really catalyzed the area, working adjacent to the sports fields there. Beyond that, we've also worked on a variety of different types of projects, from small neighborhood parks to trails to, to, you name it, really. I mean, every, every project under the sun, we've worked on really in the type of category of that project. So, when we start assembling all the different puzzle pieces and coupling that with an excellent team of subconsultants, along with Rebecca's legacy knowledge and participation in the TERS project and working on projects such as...
La Verde. So, some of our projects at Lionheart have been La Verde Park here in the same development, but also Lamar Beach, which is full of soccer fields and baseball diamonds in downtown Austin. I've led projects prior to starting my own firm that have gone on to win national awards, the Houston Arboretum, Wimberly Blue Hole, and Lafitte Greenway in New Orleans, so...
Well, thank you. That really kind of helps a little bit for me to understand because you're Texas-based, so you know already the, not so much the concerns, but the, with the heat, with the conservation, with the water, the level of ground, you know, black dirt versus the limestone that's around here and so forth. And you also said you did several fields around the country, up to 30 in the state of Texas. So, that, that helps me understand that you're local in a sense.
Right.
And you understand the climate that we're looking for on that end. And so, yeah, that's pretty much what I was wanting to get and understand because, you know, this is a big Sportplex. This is something that we've had on the bond for four years and no pun intended, but we want to hit a home run on this because, you know, you've got fields that are going to be baseball and soccer.
Yeah.
And it's going to be very important. It's probably one of the biggest fields that we're going to have in our city, so...
I would encourage you guys, in our presentation, we did provide a QR code with, with a vision and it's just kind of what, the what-if. And I shared that with Mr. Hendricks to pass along, but I would encourage you guys, if you have the opportunity, to check, check that out. You know, it's something that, it's our vision, but it is definitely together. We, I think it would be a good starting point, though. We can build on and really build momentum and excitement to get it right the first time.
Okay. Well, thank you. I yield, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is agenda item number 19, first reading, approving ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, adopting the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and establishing an updated water impact fee totaling $6,169 per LUE and an updated wastewater impact fee totaling $6,345 per LUE, amending ordinance number 298-2, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Grady Reed. Grady Reed is with HDR Engineering. They were selected to do our study for us. I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Grady Reed. I'm a senior project manager with HDR Engineering out of our Austin office. And as Leon said, we were the firm that was hired to begin the process of updating the city's water and wastewater impact fee. That process began in the spring and so it is now complete and we are bringing the results of that to you tonight. I'm just briefly going to go over the impact fee application area, the impact fee land use plan that we developed as part of this, the water and wastewater CIP costs, and then how we allocated those costs to new development, briefly go over what the impact fee calculations are, and then we'll talk about the capital improvement advisory committee recommendations. I do want to say that as, as part of this plan, that we did form the capital improvement advisory committee. That committee was the Planning and Zoning Commission plus one representative of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, as required by Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. So, everything, everything that we're presenting to you tonight obviously went through that committee. We spent many, a few nights with that committee going through and very great detail, our process, all of the calculations, letting them provide their input, and then we would take their input, make some changes, and come back and present updated results to them. The committee did verify that the land use spaces for the CIP appear to be reasonable, that the CIP itself, the capital improvements plan that we're using for this impact fee update, was reasonable, that the impact fee had been reasonably calculated, and that the maximum, new result of maximum, maximum impact fee is $12,514 per LUE. If you're not familiar with the concept of an LUE, that stands for living unit equivalent. And just so you know, impact fees are scaled based on the number of LUEs of any particular development. An LUE is, normally represents one single-family household. So, that standard meter size, 5' 3/4" meter is what we will define as one LUE. As developments or businesses come in and they have a larger meter size, for example, if a business comes in and needs a two-inch meter, that would be approximately eight LUEs. So, they would pay eight times the rate for one LUE, just so you're aware of how that works. Once we went through all this process with the committee, the committee did recommend that council adopt the maximum fee and make that the effective fee, the $12,514. The committee also recommended that these impact fees should be looked at and perhaps updated no later than three years from now. By state statute, you must update your impact fees every five years. This committee thinks that maybe the, and I agree, that the city may want to look at those a little bit sooner than five years, just as growth continues and the CIP continues to change over time. So, where would these fees apply to? Basically, any, any new development within the city's ETJ is where these impact fees would apply. It is important to note that impact fees only apply to new development. So, if there's existing connections to the water and wastewater system, this does not impact them unless they were to come in and for whatever reason want to upsize their water meter. Then you could charge them the difference in their new meter size versus their existing meter size. The new impact fees, if approved, would go into effect basically immediately upon approval by the city council. Any projects or developments that have already been plotted, their final plat has been approved, their impact fees would not change. Impact fees are assessed at time of plat approval and normally collected. At time, building permits are issued unless there, unless there's an agreement with the developers to collect those at a different time. So, any, any projects moving forward and final plat approval, after these new impact fees are adopted, they would be assessed at the higher impact fee amount. So, the land use plan that we, that we base this on, this table just shows the different land use categories that we looked at, the amount of current acres with, associated with each one of those land use types, and then where we think that's going to be 10 years from now. The current land use plan is based on the last completed master plan and then adjusted a little bit since that plan was completed a few years ago. And then we took that as our starting point and again, working with city staff, tried to grow those acres as best we could based on future development and growth patterns. So, really kind of some of the heart of the impact fee is taking this city CIP and allocating those costs out. I understand there's a whole lot of numbers on these tables, but it's important to know that whenever you're calculating an impact fee, that there's basically two types of cost. There's the cost of the city's existing system, which is the top part of this table that says, that says existing projects. And then there, excuse me, and then there's future projects or the city's CIP, Capital Improvement Program, associated with this, and those are the proposed projects. So, we went back for the city's existing assets and we had the cost of those, we pulled the cost of those from the city's fixed assets model. And then we, for each one of those groupings of assets based on project type, we again, worked with city staff and looked at a lot of engineering data to try to, try to determine how, what percentage of the capacity of those projects is currently being utilized. So, that's that percent utilization 2022 column. And then from that, we looked again at modeling what, how we think those assets are going to be utilized by 2032 or 10 years from now. That delta amount, so that column that's 2022 to 2032, another percent utilization, we then basically take that percent and we multiply it by the project cost, which for, again, for existing projects, is the construction cost of those projects as pulled from the city's fixed asset database. That percentage times that project cost then gets moved over into the 10-year cost allocation column, which is a column that we're really concerned about whenever we're going through this impact fee updating process. So, as you can see, the total proposed projects over the next 10 years total about a little over $101 million. And most of that cost has been assigned to new development within the 10-year window. So, of that $101 million, $70 million of that has been allocated to, to new development in this 10-year window. The little table on the bottom sums up the 10-year cost for each one of the asset types. We then take that cost and we divide it by the growth in LUEs or living unit equivalents. So, in this case, for the water utility, we're assuming that there's going to be 9,637 new LUEs over the 10-year period. And if we do the math, that gives us a cost per LUE of $7,437. That $7,437 is called a weighted cost of service. And all that, all that that means is that we're just taking into account the cost of existing assets plus future assets. We did the same thing on the, on the wastewater side. And again, you can see on the wastewater side, there's, there's a lot, a lot of proposed projects totaling 170, a little over $170 million, including two wastewater treatment plan expansions. We do have half of the first wastewater treatment plan expansion assigned to the impact fee. We don't have any of the second expansion assigned to the impact fee since, at this point, it's estimated that that future expansion will still have excess capacity at the end of the 10-year planning period. But again, most of the cost over this, of these proposed projects have been allocated to growth over the 10-year period. And so, on the wastewater... allocated to growth over the 10-year period. And so on the wastewater side, we ended up with a, with a new weighted cost of capital of $8,664. Now, why those are important is because once we have that dollar amount, we, chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code then says you have one of two options. You can either take that dollar amount and simply just cut it in half, and that becomes your new maximum impact fee amounts, or you can do what is called a rate credit. If we do a rate credit, basically what we're doing is we're making a set of assumptions and trying as best as we can to determine how much of these new projects, new growth is going to pay for through the water and wastewater rates. Because the idea is that we do not want to basically double charge them for these projects. We don't want to levy an impact fee on them for the cost of these projects and also recoup that same cost through the rates. So there's a series of, of assumptions that we go through and making that, and making that determination. If we look at the comparison between the two options, the city is better off, meaning it's going to produce a higher impact fee if we do the, the rate credit option. So using the rate credit option would produce a new maximum water impact fee of $6,169 per LUE, and a new maximum wastewater impact fee of $6,345 per OUE, for combined water and wastewater impact fee of $12,514. If we look at kind of how this compares to, to other impact fees in the area, you can see that the current impact fee, again, combined is $6,361, so this would almost basically double the existing impact fee. Even doubling it, you're not the highest. You're actually pretty far from that, from the highest, which is Flugerville, depending on where you live in Flugerville and, and NBU. And you're, you're certainly not the lowest. I think we're going to see these impact fees certainly continue to increase for some of these cities over, over time as they go through this process and they're continuing to update their impact fees. Just because we're, quite simply, we're faced with the fact that bringing any more, any more water supplies to central Texas, the water supplies at this point that we're developing are expensive, they're located a long ways away, and so it's taking, they're just very expensive to not only develop those water supplies, but also to convey them to this area. And again, that's one of the reasons why the impact fee advisory committee does recommend that the city go through this process again, no later than three years, as those costs continue to come in for ARWA or any other additional supplies that the city may be looking for in the future. So the options basically presented to you tonight is, is option one, which would be to adopt a proposed water and wastewater impact fees approved by the water and wastewater impact fee advisory committee. That's the $12,514, approve that as the maximum, and also set your impact fees to, to equal that. You could maintain the current impact fees or potentially adopt the $12,514, but set an effective rate to something less than that. That $12,514, all that means is that as a council, you can set an effective impact fee anywhere between zero up to that maximum. It cannot be above the, the maximum fee as shown. Staff, not only did we work, spent significant time with the, with the impact fee advisory committee, we also did spend significant time with, with city staff through this process and had several meetings with them, discussed everything in great detail with them. And staff is also in recommendation of approving and approving the maximum impact fee and setting the effective impact fees to be the same.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Rizzo?
During the study, did we take into effect affordability when it comes to new build? And what I'm asking and where I'm leading to is that, you know, a lot of these houses that we're probably looking at, these new subdivisions are over $300,000. But what if someone, a private individual who owns a lot is probably building something substandard, maybe a small tiny house under $200,000? Would, did we take into consideration about maybe lowering the impact fee on someone building something $200,000 to $280,000?
That is not something that we specifically looked at when we were going through this process. However, it is up to council's discretion that should you wish to waive or give a credit against the impact fee for any particular development, you, you can do that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about affordability throughout the city and then making sure we're allowing everybody to share in homeownership as well. And not everybody's going to be able to afford a, a expensive home. Some people are going to do the bare minimum. So the impact fee for a smaller home might be something we consider. Brian, any thoughts on it?
No, I'd have to give it some thought, actually, of how, how we could do that and whether, how legally we could do that through the impact fees. I mean, we'd have to, I have not considered how to handle that with a smaller home. I think it's a, is a living unit equivalent of the impact on the system. That's the calculations of their share of that cost.
Councilor Parson?
Thank you. When was the last time we did an analysis on the impact fees for the city of Kyle?
I, I don't remember the exact time. I could, I could look it, I could look that up, but I believe that y'all are right, y'all are bumping up the five-year, at the five-year window.
It's been a while.
Leon Barba, City Engineer. Last time we adopted a change in impact fees was in January of 2017.
Okay. How much have you grown since then? A lot? So...
As the committee recommended, we did that in 2017. Can you imagine what the costs for construction were at that time compared to what they, they are today? So we do need to do it more frequently.
So what determines the frequency of when we need to do this? Because at the rate that we are growing and we are approving, I'm thinking that maybe even five years is way too much. I don't know if, like, I would like to know what would be the recommendation on how often we need to do this studies.
Councilmember, we could do this every year if council desires. But I think the chapter 395, if I'm correct on that, says you shouldn't wait any more than five years.
Okay. And so what sets the cap for the $12,514?
So, so basically that, that's, that's kind of what, what these tables represent. So again, what, what we did is we, we go through and we take, and in simplified terms, we go through, we take all of your costs of your 10-year proposed projects, your capital improvement plan. We assign all or proportion of those costs to growth that we expect to occur in the next 10 years. We sum that total up, and we divide it by the total number of, of new LUEs that we expect over that 10-year period.
And so this amount is not really accounting for any future development that we are getting? It's just what we have currently in our CIP and the future projects?
We're looking out, we're looking at what we think is going to develop over the next 10 years. So we're looking out 10 years.
Okay.
The capital improvement program is, is, was basically a 10-year capital improvement program. And then as far as future growth goes, again, we're looking out over, over a 10-year window.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't wait so long next time to do this assessment, because I'm looking at the, the rates that we have for new groundfalls. Just, and I know that we are not as, you know, to that level of growth, but we're surely approaching that. And so if I see for them, and you had that table, they have, they're around 29, 25,000, and we're around, right, like halfway. So I am in full support of increasing these impact fees to the maximum amount, and for us to make sure that we are doing an analysis at least every other year.
Yeah. And like, and like I said, there's, there's a lot of things that goes into these computations. One of those certainly is the, the cost of the projects themselves, as, as well as the growth. Some cities can find themselves in a, in a position in where they, they have some really high-cost projects that they need to develop, but they may not be growing a whole lot over the next 10 years. They're trying to get ahead of some of that growth. And that tends to produce a very high impact fee. Conversely, you, you can have instances in where a city may have a significant CIP, but if they're growing quick enough, then we're going to take that dollar amount and divide it by a pretty high number of LUEs that we expect to come on over the next 10 years. So it could produce a, a smaller impact fee.
So these are my last comments. If we were not to do this, we will have to pay out of the general fund, correct, for all of this?
Water, wastewater, water, wastewater fund.
Not the general fund, wouldn't be property taxes.
So it would still be out of the city's pocket that we will have to pay for this improvement? Because I just want to make sure that we state that this is not affecting any current homeowner or any fees they're paying. These are going to be new developments and ETJ, anything that gets approved if we were to pass it right now, correct?
That is correct. Impact fees would only be assessed on new development. However, any dollars that don't come in from the impact fees for new projects, those do get put into the water and wastewater utility rates, which of course every customer...
So would like, I would like to...
I have comments.
I know. But let me do the motion, and then I would like to make a motion to approve item 19 to a maximum amount of $12,514, and make sure that we do an analysis every other year.
Yeah, it does have, there's a public hearing on this item as well. So. Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right. If there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes? Yeah.
So when I listened to some of the meetings regarding the impact fees, the initial numbers that were calculated were not 12,000. So we started at 16, then we got to 14, and then we came back down to 12. So that tells me that there was some higher calculated numbers when we started this process. So you said 12,000 is the max, but there was a higher number of 14 before we got to this 12. So...
That is, that is correct.
That's correct.
And we've ran out of water in two years straight. So if we're giving away our water, we end up paying more. The residents end up paying more out of cover of the CIP. So are we under calculating the 10-year period at only 70 million for water? Because we've, we've ran out two years straight. So you have a 70 million expense of water for CIPs for the next 10 years. But if it's higher, then our impact fees would be higher, which gets us back to the 14. So I'm not, I, I'm very hesitant about saying the 12 is where it, where it needs to be. I do feel this number started higher.
You are correct. It did start higher. Some of those changes were, were due to the fact that we did change the methodology about how we were incorporating some of the ARWA cost into the fees, and we, we changed that just because we wanted to be more consistent with how we were incorporating. We wanted to do that in a similar way as we are with your GBA cost. Chapter 395 doesn't really provide any, any guidance on how to handle something like an ARWA or, or a GBA, where it is more of an annual cost and not just a, a one-time, hey, we're going to go build a new pipeline or, or pump station. So that, that was part of the, the initial change. That did lower the impact fee. From that point, we did receive some, some additional comments on the fee. And so we did go back, and again, we worked extensively with staff to kind of go through those comments. We did make some changes to the fee at that time based on, based upon those comments. Some of those changes resulted in a, in a higher fee. I believe the wastewater fee actually went, went up slightly. But the, the water fee did come down. I do think that this is a reasonable impact fee based on where we're at. Again, I would certainly recommend that you look at this sooner rather than later. I think every other year would be, would be good, because costs are, are going to continue to go up. But again, in, in working through this with, with city staff, we made decisions that we, we thought were reasonable at this time.
So I've heard that other municipalities have provisions that state impact fees are subject to change, so that we do not necessarily have to hold a three-year period before raising them. That's not, that's not clearly truthful.
The, the only way that you can do that, there are some cities that they will, if, for instance, there's a, there's a large change in the impact fees, or some cities, if they are approving impact fees for, for the first time, they will approve the, the maximum impact fee amount, but then they will kind of stair-step up to that maximum. So year one may be 30% of that maximum, year two may be 50%, and so on and so forth. That's allowed.
That's what I was kind of looking at as a scale method of, if we did start at 14 in the first year, then the 13, then we get to 12. I, I would have been much more confident in that number, I guess, being scaled, instead of just coming down to 12 for three years.
Yeah. Again, that, again, I, I would recommend that you, that you look at this in two years or, or three years, and, and that, that maximum impact fee amount would change. But as, as far as the original question, you, if you adopt an effective rate that equals the maximum rate, the maximum rate that we're recommending, the $12,514, you cannot go above that without redoing the, the study.
So maybe you can revise it every year?
So from a staff perspective, we would recommend going back every year or two. And I think, based on, you know, the discussion that we've had, the sooner you do this, the better accuracy you have in the fee and making sure you're recovering your costs. But we are in dynamic environment with our water supply and some of the investments that we're going to be making. So it could be that we want to come back in a year if we feel like there's some large capital costs that are going to be included, and we need to capture those that weren't in this model. So you can always do that. You can come back annually if you need to. You just can't go above the stated maximum unless you do another study. And you can support it. It has to be legally permissible.
So this item does have a public hearing. If there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak?
Tracy Shield for the record. So I was a late member to the commission for the impact fee. And it was my very first meeting of that. And when I had first heard that it had started at 16, went down to 14, and then he told us where those comments were coming from, and that was from a developer association. And that bothered me. That was one of the reasons why they looked at it and came down. So that bothered me, because that's not the way the city of Kyle works, number one. Number two, the other reason I dissented, and thank you for correcting that on the table, was to actually look at all of the special utility district water providers. They didn't have a couple on that, that still affect the residents of the city of Kyle. And if you'll notice, you know, back to that chart, county line, it says 11.7. My number is 1,300, just for the water itself. So, and the reason for the wastewater being so low, of course, is because county line doesn't have very many wastewater. They are a water company. So that was the reason I voted no was, that's just, I, you know, I, I agreed with the 14, especially with knowing that ARWA is coming up. And you guys got that presentation last meeting, so you know what that means. So I'm going to leave it at that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Hi. Good evening. David Glenn with the Home Builders Association. Didn't plan on speaking tonight, but since we were just mentioned, I figured I would come here and share with y'all some of the information that we learned when we looked at these impact fees. It is true that we did sit down with the, with the consultant and the city staff, and we actually hired an out, an outside firm of our own called Launch DFA Financial, who specializes in development fee analysis across the country. And through their expertise, we actually had that team sit down with the city's consultant, city staff, and some of our members, and went through the whole project, piece by piece. We have a, a report that I'm happy to share with y'all. I, I didn't send it right now because I thought that we had landed in a really good place. But it, it did, basically, the short version is, some of the projects that were being accounted for in that 10-year period weren't actually going to be fully used in that 10-year period. So for example, 100% of the cost of a project was thrown into the CIP, but only 75% of that project's capacity would be... that project's capacity would be used within that 10 years. So by law, you're not allowed to include more of the cost of a project if that project's not going to be used, that same amount of capacity. So that was what brought the fee down. It was a rather large project. I think it was somewhere in the rung of $10 million delta. So I, and I sent some information to y'all and some comparisons from other cities as well, so I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
So what interest do you have with Kyle?
So we represent the Home Builders Association, right? So we cover 30 cities in seven different counties. A lot of our builders build, we build probably between 80, 90% of the houses, all in central Texas. We are constantly trying to find ways to meet more of the market, which means affordable homes, homes that can be built more affordably are, are important. To see the fee double, that's a pass-through cost. So in the, in the number I sent y'all, the NAHP has what they call the price-out index, where they look at the median home price in a, in a community, the median income, and then whatever the mortgage rates are at that time. And they basically can analyze how many families are priced out per $1,000 increase. And in the Austin MSA, it's 1,166 families. So if we're talking about a $6,000 increase plus whatever margin has to be put on top of that, passed down to the consumer, you're looking at 7,000 families who are no longer able to afford to live here. So I had sent a document to y'all, two documents in that email. One was the teachers' pay for Hays County, another one was the police officer's pay for the city. And the reason I sent that is because I think it's important to look at, I think you have to be a third or fourth-year teacher and you have to have two people in that household before you can afford the median home price in the city. If you continued, if the fees continue to increase, you're going to find it harder and harder for, for police officers, firefighters, and teachers to be able to afford to live in Kyle. And I think what happens then is the folks who are commuting in, we're seeing more and more as traffic continues to get worse and sprawl, environmental concerns, et cetera, are staying put. And so I, that's, that's, that's our, that's our angle. We want to make sure that our home buyers, our homes, sorry, home builders have the widest market that they can sell to.
Well.
This is a public hearing, so this is for people to speak. And then when it's over, you can bring him back up and engage with him. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, he, he just sent an email, so I wanted to ask questions about the email he sent.
Which, I'm saying you can, it's just in the public hearing. I'm trying to follow the rules, that's all. So we're not supposed to go back and forth during citizen comments or public hearings. So I can close it and you can just stand right there and then we'll keep going. Sorry.
I had another comment about what he said.
All right, yeah, but all right, I would like to invite anyone else to come up and speak and then we'll, we'll, we'll engage with David and his email. Thank you.
Neil Stegal, planning and zoning commissioner for the record. Just to keep this stupid simple, we looked at these numbers in their detail, a bit overwhelmed, frankly, it's quite a bit to look at. But what we decided was simply that too much of the burden was being borne by current ratepayers and that that had always been the case as this city had grown, that the current residents were making the outlays for the development. So we wanted to see something that was fairer for the citizens of the city. What we first came to was essentially the $14,000 figure. It wasn't 16 that I remember, though it could have been. But in the end, what we agreed upon was that the $12,000 plus, which is, I recall just off the top of my head, doubled the impact fee. And we thought that that was a good place to be, to start. We realized there's so many inputs here in terms of numbers and the dynamics of development in the city, though, that we really wanted to be able to come back and have the council come back and revisit this. And our thought or recommendation was no more than three years out. So that was the gist of our discussion and what was behind the, the thinking and the decision-making of the majority.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It's now closed. Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. So I appreciate having two members of our planning and zoning here being able to make the comments. I really, really appreciate it. And I couldn't agree more. I think that we have been able to have a lower tax rate despite having such a low impact fee. So I am really looking forward to see what we can do once these impact fees have been doubled. And I, you know, I really would like to retract that from going every, two years to every year. We are growing at a really fast rate and there is no way our current taxpayers should be taking the burden of paying for this impact fees, which sadly only benefits developers and that's not what we are advocating for in here, so.
There's no motion on the table, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve item 19 with a maximum fee of 12,514 and for us to do a revision of this analysis every year.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Parsley, seconded by Councilor Zuniga, that we approve the maximum amount and recommended amount, which I believe are the same. So we're going with the recommendation. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Z.
Yeah, I just want to know, what does the study cost us that we're going to be doing yearly? What's the cost on that? Because that's the question we haven't asked up here.
They're putting me on the spot as to coming over the future fee for this. Typically.
No, the study.
No, I mean, I mean our, our, our fee. Typically, the fee for updating an impact fee is somewhere in the 20 to 25,000 dollar range.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. So always remember, there is a fee for every study we do, so keep that in mind when you're looking at.
Then maybe next year, we can, we don't have to be conservative with the amount that we charge for the impact fee like we were this year.
The, the only other thing that I will say as far as the, the cost to do the study, that cost does get rolled into the impact fee, so it is recoverable.
There you go.
Through the, through the impact fee.
But somebody's still paying for it.
I know, I know you still pay it, but I'm, I'm just trying to give you a little, I'm trying to give you a little bit of good news.
There's been more expensive studies.
So I, I have a, a couple of comments, some you might like, David, and some you probably aren't going to like, so just prepare yourself. So comment number one, that I think at the end of the day is correct, the cost of living is going up. And so the impact fees going up does have an impact on affordability. There's no question about the fact that it is a pass-through and so we're increasing the price of new homes in the city of Kyle and et cetera, and the cost of developing commercial by a fairly large percentage. You know, like you say, a two-inch line is eight LUEs. If that's, you know, carried out from a $12,000 standpoint, it's $100,000. Or for, you know, so it's a substantial amount of potential impact on development that comes that way. But where I very much disagree with you and why I'm 100% in support of the motion that was made is when you talked about pricing people out of their homes, you included the, the cost of the impact fee and you also included the mortgage rates and just turned it into a monthly amount. But what you're not considering there is the impact on utility bills, which is what oftentimes people refer to as a hidden fee. But your actual monthly bill ends up, if you're paying $150 a month, you multiply that out over 12 months. That's also a substantial impact on a homeowner. And so the cost being what it is, if we go with a, 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 a lower impact fee, then we're going to have to borrow money to put in that infrastructure. And paying for the borrowed money means that, that we are having to increase our rate, rates, which we've had to do multiple times. And our water rates are now among the highest in order to shoulder that burden for ARWA when often, it's not the current residents who need the new water, it's the future residents who are causing that. So the argument on affordability is what you're really saying is that we should have the new development, not have to pay as much for the impact that they're making and instead spread that increase out over people who aren't a part of that growth. And so the overall cost maybe wouldn't be quite so substantial on an individual new person, but the total dollar amount of the impact for, of new infrastructure on the system is borne 100% by the residents of the community one way or another. And so for me, I think there is a point where you can get overly, where you're trying to charge more money than 10 years' worth of CIPs all rolled in. And then you're in a position where you're actually impacting the new development in a negative way. You're making them pay for more than their fair share. But I love the process and to me, because it is such a state-regulated process, when you go through it all the way and identify all your CIPs, roll out the costs and absorb that into your impact fee, to do that regularly makes sense. I don't know if you have to do it every year because we plan out far more than one year at a time. So we know what our, what our CIP impact is going to be next year, but with, you know, the fact that we just had to do a $14 million increase that was unbudgeted, I think that even for right now, especially because if you think about it, what's happening over the next three years, ARWA is coming online. So we, we really are crossing that threshold, so we might as well, hopefully we won't have to do that every year forever because it is a big laborious process, but I'm open to it. So anyways, th- those are my comments. It's, it's not fun, but the truth is, a water line, which is what the commentary, I think, from Leon was, you know, how much did, here's an example, the wastewater treatment plant, which we formulated in 2017, costs $30 million. And it was an increase of the plant facilities. And we were told that the next expansion, because of the way we did it, would actually be cheaper. And instead, it's, how much Leon? $100 million? So that's more than double. That's triple. So that's right in line with the 200% increase, which is triple, which is on the wastewater side, which is why I support it. The math checks out, at least in my opinion, and why are we having to expand the wastewater treatment plant? Not because the people are using more wastewater that currently live here, because we are adding new ratepayers into the system, which is causing that to happen, so. Anyway.
And inflation of dollars.
Those are all my thoughts on it. Thank you for indulging me. Mayor Protim.
And just real quick, seeing a study the other day I saw on the news where, when it comes to transportation plan between Austin and San Antonio, they're calling this the new metroplex, they're looking at what, the next 20 years, 9 million people? Okay, so imagine 2 million, 3 million in Austin, 3 million in San Antonio, where's the other million going to come? Come here in Buta, San Marcos, New Profs and all that? So it's, it's, it's looking at, at that rate, so it's coming.
Well, I don't think it should be our ideal to have the highest fees on anything. That's not what we're after.
It's the prediction of the numbers, like you're saying, the math is adding up.
Yes, we want to make sure that we are capturing those CIP dollars in our, in our rates. And then the last thing is, I know you presented that slide of our rates are up here and a lot of others are down below, but something tells me that right around the corner, it's kind of like, you know, the new quarterback getting a, you know, a great deal, you think he's the highest paid and then the next one comes and it's always higher than that. Something, sorry for the sports metaphor, but I think it's, I think there are quite a few of those cities that are about to jump up right where we are. If I'm wrong, tell me. Ah, yeah, okay, all right. Any further discussion? Councilor Z.
Yeah, if everybody's gone, just one last one. Brian, if we vote on this, is there any way we could go back and modify this in a way in case for what I brought up earlier about affordability, making sure if we, once after we research this, is there a way to bring something back if we vote on it today?
Well, this will be the first of two readings and so we would need to have, we would have a second reading on the 19th, so if there's additional information, we could certainly look at it. We'd be happy to look at any information that you need.
I definitely would like to think about the affordability aspect on this. There are some houses that might be built that aren't at the level that most of the development's going up. Could be somebody on a family lot trying to build something that's just small and do we want to charge them the same impact fee as everybody else? Somebody building a 300 or 400,000 dollar house, do we want to charge them a 1 billion or 250,000 dollar house that impact fee? And we're thinking about affordability, inclusivity, making sure everybody has that chance to build a home in, in Kyle.
Any thought on that?
I thought they, they already calculated by the cost of construction, impact fees percentage of the cost of the construction.
No, it's a, it's a specific amount based on the LUE. That, that would be the 12,514.
I guess my thought is, you know, water and wastewater doesn't know the size of the home that it's going into and the calculations aren't based on that. They're based on the amount of water that you are applying for. So the smaller, like, it's not just residents or homeowners who pay, like when you do an apartment complex. Those are really small units, but the amount of people that are there are having to draw down a big amount of infrastructure. So I'm not opposed to trying to come up with sort of like a, maybe some kind of homestead exemption kind of thing. I, I just don't know exactly how that would work. And what I wouldn't want to do is, is accidentally make it such that multifamily developers get to pay even less, which, because theirs, they have the smallest square footages.
I think this is a discussion we could have even after this vote, before a second reading, so if we could just explore into it, I would really appreciate it from the DIAS, because I don't want to give direction without the DIAS consent.
Okay.
Would you be okay with exploring it?
Well, if it passes unanimously, I was, just before you said that, I was planning to ask for it to be finally passed, but if you want to object to the final passage, you can force it to come back for, you know, December 19th.
Is there any way that we can finally pass it and then do an amendment if we have a situation like?
He doesn't, he doesn't know if he can do that, that's why I'm asking.
I don't think even if you were to build your own house, that you do not, you should be exempted from paying the new fee that everybody else is going to pay.
So what I'm asking is affordability and that's giving everybody a chance to build a house in Kyle, even those that aren't going to build the 300, 400, $100,000 house that can afford a big impact fee like this. There are some people that are going to build a smaller house, let me finish please, that's going to be able to apply, but it might keep them from building the house because we're adding a big, large impact fee on them. They're not going to have three bathrooms in their house. They're not going to have two bathrooms, maybe a single bathroom and maybe one or two adults living in the house. They're not going to use the same amount of water as somebody living in a 300, $400,000 home. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, can I ask a question? How often do we get requests for building, you know, or impact? How much, how often do we collect impact fees from a single person trying to build a house in their lot?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I mean, we, I, I would suspect it's a much smaller percentage than, than the larger builders that are out there, but we can, we can look at that and try to give you the answers. I, I think we were thinking over here about, you know, even the possibilities of trying to have some type of smaller, affordable component. It's really got to be based on the meter size is basis on our understanding of the law. So I don't think there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how you can approach that. There may be some other avenues that we could explore, but right now, I think we don't think there's a permissible way to do that legally.
Paige, is that correct?
Yep. I, I would agree with that. I thi- I think that the studies are based on the, the mathematics and uniformity of how those, those fees are applied. And so, I mean, it's always a possibility, but I, I just not, based on what I understand, I'm, I'm not hopeful that there's a solution.
Well, thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All's a favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. And does anyone object to this item being finally passed? All right, seeing none, this item is finally passed. Next up is Jen, item 22, receive a report, hold discussion, consider directing the city manager to develop and release a request for proposal to provide additional mental health services through a cooperative agreement between the city, county, and any private partners that are identified. Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. You know, mental health is an issue I deeply care about. Many of us have had discussions over the past year about how we can help kids and families who are struggling in our community. I called for this item tonight because I'm hoping we can take a first step toward finding a solution for our kids. The outcome I'm hoping to achieve tonight is to ask staff to create an RFP to solicit a proposal that lays out how stakeholders in our city and county can come together to provide resources for those who need it most. That's it, nothing more, nothing less. I'm not here to ask for money. I'm merely asking you to support this concept by taking the next step in this process. So we have a potential solution to consider. Over the past six months, I've spent a significant amount of time meeting with local stakeholders to better understand the mental he- health landscape in our community. What those conversations made very clear to me is that our city lacks much-needed resources that significantly could affect our community in a positive way. From therapy services, psychiatry, addiction support, behavioral interventions, academic assistance, career prep, community and service learning are just a few. But we simply don't have those resources and we're not alone in not having those resources. There are cities all over this country that are in a similar position. In May of 2022, the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute conducted a study that addressed mental health needs in Hayes County. It's right here and I can send it to anybody who wants to go through it. The report states that 50% of all mental health issues develop by the age of 14 and 75% develop by the age of 24. The study also states that symptoms usually are present for years before a youth is brought in for help. Due to these challenges, many children and youth first receive treatment in juvenile detention centers. And why is this? According to the report, and these are some quotes I pulled out, there are limited outpatient behavioral health providers for kids and adults. Hill Country MHDD, which is Mental Health and Development Disabilities, who we have someone here from Hill Country tonight. Hill Country has strained capacity and is unable to meet the needs of the growing population in Hayes County. There are rising community concerns relating to student substance abuse and mental health, which we know, unfortunately know a lot about in this city. Identification and treatment of mental illness and substance. Identification and treatment of mental illness and substance use disorder should occur at the earliest stage of the, the illness. And finally, there is limited community and stakeholder coordination with the opportunity for building from existing efforts. And that, right there, is something that I, I think is very important, is, is the coordination between invested contributors around our city and county, is we have the ability to affect change in that area. Earlier this year, state rep Aaron Weiner held a town hall with parents and relatives of children who were taken from them by the fentanyl crisis. I believe in total, we've lost seven kids to fentanyl overdose since the summer of 22, 2022, and somewhere around a half dozen cases, or I'm sorry, a dozen cases of suspected overdose. During the discussions, the families shared some of the struggles they faced when trying to get help for their kids, and some of those are lack of local providers, and the few that are local have long wait lists and inflexible hours. Some of the families lacked insurance or had insurance plans that don't cover the services that their kids badly need. There is a high barrier to entry when it comes to getting help, it's difficult, it puts a strain on an entire family, and issues regarding transportation during the limited hours of availability for some of these providers. Just going to throw some quick data points at you and then, and try to wrap this up. According to Hill Country, which is the, the lone clinic here in Kyle, there have been 1,197 total patients in the last year, 339 of which are children, 22 between the ages of five and nine, 145 between the ages of 10 and 14, and 225 between the ages of 15 and 19. Some comparison data, just in the last 90 days, that age range of five to 19 accounts for 13.9% of all the total service, mental health services provided in the city of San Marcos. In the city of Kyle, it is dub, over double at 33.9% of all total mental health services provided by Hill Country. In a city that's larger than us, we have over doubled the total volume of kids who are, have sought care for mental health support. You know, this is really personal for me. I, I've learned a diff, a difficult way to be very open with everybody about my own struggles with mental health. It can be a very lonely headspace at times, knowing that I lived the overwhelming majority of my life, not even realizing that I battled depression and serious case of ADHD. I want to do everything I can to create opportunities for our community to receive the care that they need. I missed out on a lot of great opportunities and experiences in my life because I didn't recognize the reasons for my struggles. I wouldn't be sitting here today had I not gotten help, I probably would be somewhere else stuck in what seemed like a never-ending spiral. Sitting here now, being in this position, we have the ability to make an impact on our kids that can last an entire lifetime. No, we're not doctors, so we obviously cannot ourselves provide care, but what we are is decision makers, who tonight, I hope, will say yes to taking this first step. Whether or not there is a second step, that decision will come another day. Thank you all for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Councillor Heiser.
I have Michelle Zalmeyer here from Hill Country, she's the head clinician at the, at the clinic, for, to answer any questions.
Thank you. I also wanted to echo a couple of data points that Councilman Heiser shared. Again, my name is Michelle Zalmeyer, I'm with the local mental health authority, I supervise the Kyle Mental Health Clinic here tucked behind Seton Hayes. We, as Councilman Heiser said, he mentioned some data about the significant number of children that my clinic sees, but I wanted to really point out to you guys tonight that the number of crisis, the, the crisis percentage that my clinic sees was 26% of our total crisis calls were for children. So these are children that are having thoughts about wanting to hurt or kill themselves, or hurt or kill someone else, or they have mentally decompensated to a point where there are safety concerns for them to remain in their homes. So 26% of our total crisis calls are those children, compared to 18% in San Marcos. So what that tells me, I mean, we can, there could be a lot of theories for why that is, right? But I think the most compelling of it is the lack of outpatient services in Kyle. We don't have anything else, so people's oftentimes first point of contact with mental health treatment is when they're in crisis, when they've deteriorated to that point. So that is the big data. The other big data point I wanted to point out was that in the past 90 days, my clinic has provided 567 routine mental health services to children, compared to just 366 in San Marcos. So there is really a need here, it is really being used, the routine mental health services, and as Councilman Heiser said, we are the only real provider of that in this area. So I did want to speak to the Meadows report really briefly, just, if you guys haven't had a chance to look at it, I highly recommend, there's some good stuff in there, but one of the big takeaways for me was they said nearly half of all children in Hayes County have one or more what they call adverse childhood experiences. So one way that you guys can think about adverse childhood experiences is trauma, right? They've been through abuse neglect, exploitation, parental incarceration, have, they have maybe parents in the home that have mental illness or substance use, basically they've been through some type of trauma. And what we know about trauma also is that those numbers are typically under-reported, right? So there is shame and there is stigma around having been through something horrible in your life. So even though they say nearly half have been through trauma, I would say that that number is much greater. And we know that there are a lot of negative outcomes for people who have untreated mental illness. As Councilman Heiser mentioned, they end up in jails, detention centers, hospitals, draining resources, and not really getting comprehensive help. So some of the barriers that the parents in my clinic face are, you know, having to pull their kids for multiple school appointments, there's a lack of coordination, as the Meadows study points out, between our youth-serving agencies, there's a stigma around seeking help for mental health, and if families, you know, we talked about negative outcomes, there are some other ones I wanted to reiterate that we're seeing in this city specifically is substance use, untreated mental illness, adverse childhood experiences, and no one to process or heal that those experiences, that can lead to substance use, right? I have seen kids, and just for a little bit of background, I'm trying not to take up too much time, is that I have 15 years of experience with at-risk youth and justice-involved youth, and what I have seen time and time again is there is some kind of trauma in their childhood, and in their teenage years, it turns into negative peer associations. They, they use negative peers, they meet strangers online, they turn to drugs, they just are doing all the problematic ways of coping that we wouldn't want for our children, and that is what I see happening here in this city, is kids are not turning to pro-social ways of coping with their trauma. And we don't have resources for them, even if they did want to turn to some professional help. So I won't take up too much more of your time, but I did want to just note that what the councilman is proposing today would, could potentially serve to expand resources in our area to ensure that kids are not falling through the cracks. And I believe that we are doing the best we can with the resources we currently have available, and I believe that it's also true that we could still do better for the kids in this city, especially in a city like Kyle where there's just going to be continued growth, and that is just going to create further strain on our local resources. So I did want to say a special thank you to Councilman Heiser for pioneering local action on this issue, and to everyone here tonight for hearing me speak. And I am a licensed clinical social worker, I don't know if I mentioned that, so if you have questions about mental health or anything, I would be happy to answer anything tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Breschel.
Okay, I have a few questions. My first question is for you, when you say routine mental health service, when a, a child calls in, what does that look like?
Yeah, so routine mental health services could be anything from case management appointments, it could be skills training, we provide evidence-based curriculums to kids where we're teaching them skills to manage their mental health symptoms. We have a, my clinic has a family partner that works with the families of children experiencing mental illness, and so they are someone with lived experience raising their own children, so they, they have, routine mental health services could include family partner appointments, where families get to be connected with their, someone else who's had lived experience. We also have medication management, so the kids in my clinic would get to see psychiatrists, usually those appointments are quarterly, the case management and skills could happen weekly. I'm sure I'm forgetting some because I'm a little nervous, but that's, those are big ones.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
My next question would be for Councilmember Heiser. Are you wanting to specify this RFP for mental health services for children? Because you kept talking about that, but I wasn't sure if it was going to be children and adults, or children only?
Children. I don't, I, I think it's unrealistic to expect us going from zero to 60 overnight in, in being able to try to create a solution for the totality of the problem. And I just am a fervent believer in incremental growth, and so I think knowing that the data says that, that our kids are the most affected by this, that, that is a good place to start. And I don't, I'm not sure as of right now if I would want to take it any further than that.
Okay, and lastly, for our city manager, if we put out an RFP like this, what do you anticipate would be the response? I guess I'm a little confused as to what exactly is being asked. I'm not sure, like, it's pretty vague with the county and private partners, like, would we be subsidizing a program like Hill, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Hill Country MHD.
Thank you. Or would we be funding a program of our own?
I, I think, as I understand it from Councilmember Heiser, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would be a very broad-based solicitation out in the marketplace to see who could provide services like this, and then for them to provide us their vision of how they would deliver those services. And once we had those proposals, we would be able to go back to partners in the area, including the county, the funding that we had approved in the budget, which was $100,000 this past fiscal year to, to look at a program like this, as well as potentially some grants funding from some of the area hospitals. I know we've had some conversations with them about, would there be grants available? I think there are, the question they always come back to us with, well, what are you doing? How would you provide those services if we don't yet know how we would do that? So I think it's intentionally broad, and you would go out to the, the community, see what kind of proposals that we had, and then from those proposals, we could go back to all the various partners and see if it made sense. And maybe you could do, maybe you couldn't do all of it, all of one proposal, but you could do some, and we could look at how we could provide some funding for that to, to perhaps get started. We've never done this before, so I think it'll be a bit of a learning experience as we probably go through it, but I think that's the, the vision I, I've heard from councilmember. At least that's one way we could do it.
I, I have a question, you know, the, the city has been meeting with the county as well as representatives from St. David's and Ascension Seton Hayes about addressing the mental health issues that we, we have, providing those resources. So in, in your mind, is this a step towards fulfilling, like, are we talking two different things here, or is this all, is everything moving towards the same direction? Is it compatible with these other conversations we're having with the professional fields in the county?
Yeah, well, the discussions we've had with those third parties are, you know, I'm hopeful that there, there can be movement toward a solution down the road, but we're looking at three, four years from now, realistically, with just how projects come along. And so if we were just to wait three to four years, you know, at least the way that I think about it and why this came up to begin with, is we would be sitting here for three to four years, knowing we have this serious problem on our hands with kids who need help, and we're, we wouldn't be doing anything in that time.
Well, I think that, I think that's a very, very valid point.
This is, to me, is a bridge that we're building to that bigger, more comprehensive, more sustainable and long-lasting solution.
So is, so to that end, is this, because it's so broad, I don't, I can't tell if this is about starting a complete, investing our money in a completely different direction, or if it's truly a bridge in the sense that we're looking for proposals for how to start developing a program in partnership with the county that can then roll into something more substantial? Or is this going to, is it going to be a situation where we can't move forward with that because we've already devoted all these resources to, down this path?
I, I look at this as a year-by-year, or quarter-by-quarter, year-by-year thing until, with, with the hope that we are able to, to work with the hospitals and the county to try to, you know, see what opportunities there is for a larger facility that would be run by one of the hospitals. And like, as Brian said, this is intentionally vague, like, I'm, I'm not an expert on all this, I went out and had conversations, but I, I mean, who am I to say, like, what the day-to-day execution of what these services could look like? I, you know, I've talked to people in the school district, I've talked to communities and schools, which provides contractual, by contract, support for 10 Hays CISD schools, eight of which I think are in the city of Kyle. And just everything that I've learned from those conversations is that there are, there is a significant gap that could be met with, in the, in the areas of therapy, psychiatry, addiction support, which is one of the most important things here to me, behavioral interventions, academic assistance, career prep, prep, and community and service learning. And, you know, you could look at this as like a wraparound program for kids who, you know, if you want to use one, an example of a kid in our school district, who receives a referral for, for therapy per se, and goes to see a therapist that is provided by communities and schools, which is that, a third-party nonprofit program that operates from within the schools. So that kid goes to therapy, and then immediately goes home into possibly the same dysfunctional situation that created the trauma that Michelle was talking about to begin with. So, you know, I, I've, Councilmember Zunig and I have talked a lot about, you know, how we can create programming anywhere within the city to try to provide opportunities for kids to stay out of trouble, I guess would be the best way of putting it. And this was in response to knowing that fentanyl is, is, you know, an issue, and trying to address the whys behind why it's an issue. And, you know, so, you know, I, I don't know, I hope I answered your question. Like, to me, these things are not exclusive, I'm sorry, yeah, they're not exclusive, like, this is just a bridge program to what I hope to be a longer-term solution that would be run by outside contributors, like a hospital.
Additional comments? Mayor Protem.
Okay, I'll make mine real quick. So going back to you real quick, and I think you already addressed it, but I think a lot of this comes down to funding, majority, correct? Because my question I'd had was, like, what kind of roadblocks do you normally see on a day-to-day basis? And coming from the state, and you already mentioned that, you know, insurance plays a big part into that, right? But also, let's just say, if there was just a, a magic wand out there, what kind of assistance, with your experience, would, would this, a city, or a county, or a state, from your experience, that you would like to request that would be very helpful, but starting from there, on the sense, like, if, if this is what I would like, if I could get assistance or anything in the world that could really help these children or these situations, what would it, what would be like, maybe the top three, or just, I know there's so much, but just, but just from a city standpoint, or what Councilman Heiser's trying to bring forth, and I think once we get the study going, if we approve this, you know, obviously I support it, once we get a breakdown of, of what we're looking at doing, we can be able to come back and say, hey, here's some programs we can offer, is that something, like, would this be beneficial?
Yeah, I would say, you know, in a perfect world, I would love to have, you know, more child psychiatrists, there is a shortage of providers all across the country, and so whatever it takes to incentivize child providers to...
Counselor's first.
Yes, exactly, there's just, you know, I hear so many parents saying, I've called everywhere and, you know, nowhere has availability, or they don't take my insurance, or I don't have insurance. It's such a complex problem, and with complex solutions, that it's, it's tough for me to name like a top three, but definitely I, I see a major need for providers, there's, there's just not enough of them, or if they're there, maybe we're not offering them enough money to make it enticing to them. to make it enticing to them. I don't, I don't know what the solutions there are. But also I would say like for, in my experience at the clinic, you know, like crisis, having crisis staff is crucial in this area. I mean, we see a lot of crisis calls, so. But I, I think like kind of the broadness of, of this RFP is that it could encompass like early identification, right? Because we know that if we can catch these things early, if we can catch symptoms early, we can provide care and treatment and improve outcomes for kids. So for me, a dream plan would involve some kind of like plan for early identification, maybe integrating with primary care doctors so that they're better equipped to identify kids. He mentioned communities and schools. They have a great model. I just think everybody's doing things well in our community, but we're not doing it all kind of in conjunction with one another. And so I think the dream would be to bring a village together, to work together and say, well, I have, like Hill Country, we do have child psychiatrists, you know, not a lot of them, but we have them and it meets the needs of our kids. Communities and schools, my understanding is that they don't have any psychiatrist. They don't refer kids for the, or they don't provide those services to kids in communities and schools. So, you know.
There's that disconnect there.
Yeah, there's a disconnect.
Because there's also HIPAA laws that gotta be in place, correct?
Right, right. So dream world.
Working with them and also working with the other center like SHIB in San Marcos.
So, so SHIB is the clinic that I'm referring to when I say our San Marcos clinic, because my clinic's the Kyle and SHIB is the San Marcos clinic under Hill Country. So we're all the same agency, just more people know about SHIB than about my Kyle clinic.
Would someday having a facility, is that one, also a key factor in it, is actually having a facility designated for mental health, starting with adolescents all the way up? And of course, in years, you know, for adults, but at, at an age of maybe starting at age of five, you think?
So the, I, I, you have really great questions and you bring up really good things to toss around. And I think that the Meadows Institute Needs Assessment makes some really good recommendations about facilities and what the needs are in our community for those types of things. I don't personally have a, anything that I would say is my dream right here on the spot. But if, if you can get that report. Yeah, they have some really like extended observation units, which would be like a crisis stabilization unit. But that would be more like on the adult side of things. Hill Country offers a youth crisis respite center. So kids who have been in a recent crisis can go stay there, take a break from their families and the triggers that contributed to the crisis. And so we've already got a building where we're doing some good stuff for children. But, you know, there's just, the Meadows report really beautifully outlines some more recommendations for buildings.
Because I've heard that before, conversations of, of, of a county facility one day, you know? And so it's like collaborating on that and just, again, we're just tossing the ball, throwing ideas out there.
Yeah, I'm all about the outpatient services, so keeping people in the community, in their homes, connected with their, you know, because the, it's, once you start talking about buildings, you're talking about taking kids out of their homes potentially, and that's last resort.
And then you also look at the overhead, the staffing, the facility itself.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Rozep.
Yeah, just real quick, Brian, for me, it'd be making sure that this has some kind of aspect or tie-in with our mental health services at the Public Safety Center, because we are looking at expanding that. That's something that we could probably do in real time, even before a study is something, maybe finding some way to collaborate between our mental health professionals and the, the private side as well. Making sure that we can do something in real time. The other thing would be is, yeah, we, we have no experience in this, so maybe finding a city that does and getting some feedback from them, seeing what their model was would probably be very helpful and just going from there, but that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Zunig.
Yes, I also just wanted to say to Councilmember Heiser, thank you for bringing this up. It's an important social, social issue to talk about and how it does affect a lot of our young kids who maybe have some, some, some problems, some broken homes. So anyway, in any way that we can be helpful in finding partners that are willing to give us those resources. I, I know that sometimes, well, I know that UT Austin has like a social work program that's like through Zoom. So the schools use it a lot. It's where they pair you up with a coach or a counselor. And, and Texas State has a big social, social, social program. So maybe they're, they could partner up with this in, in the partnership. But definitely, you know, addressing that there's a need. Is Hill Country off of 21 still? Is, is that the Hill Country that you're talking about?
We are behind Seton Hayes off Daisy Lane, the Kyle Clinic is. But the San Marcos Clinic is on Bishop Street in San Marcos.
Okay, so I, I remember 10 years back, there was a Hill Country off of 21, and I think it lost its funding. And then Caldwell was served by Bluebonnet Trails.
Yes.
But then they had trouble with getting rides to people, but they would, they'd put them to work. So they give them work, work and a, a way to, to be productive. So, yeah, I, I see this as a somehow like a Big Brother, Big Sister kind of program with the coaching and counseling involved. And so thank you, thank you, Council, Councilmember Heiser. And hopefully, well, we can, we can jumpstart this to, to, to get it on people's radars, at least at the city level.
Awesome, thank you.
Mayor Protim.
So do we, on this item right here, do we make a motion or we just direct staff to? How do we want to work this? For you, Mayor Heiser, too, as well?
I think if you want to make a motion just to direct the city manager to do the RFP, then I could start that process, bring back the proposals.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to start an RFP referencing the mental health services, possibly to cooperate with the city and the county, other partners?
Second. All right, motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we move forward with the RFP as requested as there is discussion on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you. All right, next up, back to the top, public hearing concerning the creation of reinvestment zone number five pursuant to the provisions of chapter 311 in the Texas tax code. Ms. Libby.
Good afternoon there, City Council. My name's Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Philbright.
Stephanie, I'm over here.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just trying to get your attention. I think if we could read fourteen, items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen together, and then all of these are somewhat related, then we could then address each item individually.
Well, I was gonna bring the other ones up, but I thought the public hearing would be something we'd have first, just because it's separate, doesn't matter.
We do, we do have a presentation for all of the items.
Right.
So everyone can understand what they are, however you'd like to do it.
Well, we can go through the item and have the public hearing after, if you want to do that. That's just not normal.
I think it'd be best to do the item and have the presentation, discussion, then go back to the public hearing.
Any objections to that? All right, we're gonna bring up, please don't let me forget that we did not do the public hearing. Agenda items number fourteen through sixteen. Consideration and approval of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Kyle. Texas designating a contiguous geographic area within the corporate limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to chapter 311 of tax code known as reinvestment zone number five. Item number fifteen, which also has a public hearing. An ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas annexing approximately thirty-eight point oh four nine three acres of land at three oh one BB Road. Agenda item number sixteen, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-three of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately one hundred and one acres to planned unit development to include seventy-two acres of retail services and twenty-nine acres of multifamily and R three three for properties located at three oh one BB Road in Hayes County, Texas. This item also has a public hearing, and then that is it. Yes?
Did we do thirteen? I thought we were doing thirteen through.
We're not anymore. Yeah, all right, so we've got three different public hearings on all these items. But now, let's have a presentation and then we'll systematically go through the public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development for the record. I'm here to give you a presentation, a brief overview of the Hot Pursuit Project, is what it's known as. It's on the Caraway tract, so there's, as we mentioned, there's several items related to this project. The first one is, is just the location. I'm sure you're familiar with the location. It's in between BB and, and the Frontage Road, where the new colors, the future colors crossing road will meet with the Frontage Road as well. And this is just a brief time, an overview of the timeline of how the project will come together, this meeting and next meeting. So for, for today, we ask, we'll have the public hearing, approval of the ordinance creating the TERS, approval of the preliminary project and financing plan, and also appointing the TERS board. There's an annexation that's also included, the first reading and a public hearing, and then the PUD. So there's several documents that all work together to make this project happen. And for the next meeting on December nineteenth, we'll, if everything moves forward as planned, we'll have a TERS board meeting to approve the final project and financing plan. And then followed by the council meeting, we'll bring forward the annexation second reading, the second reading of the zoning, the chapter three eighty agreement, the development agreement and the inter-local agreement with Hayes County, and approve the final project and financing plan. So I went to Hayes County today and spoke to the judge and the commissioners, and they were supportive of the project of creating the TERS and also of participating in the incentive for the project. So they will follow the same timeline as we have laid out here. And I went through the documents, just so you could kind of see how all of the documents work together to make the project happen. Here's a deal summary. It's an overview of the breakdown between the partnership with Hayes County and the city of Kyle, and the different incentives that we'll be using, the, the different financing mechanisms that we will use to make this project come to life. And so with the participation of the city and Hayes County, you know, the city is picking up about seventy-six percent of the incentive with the county participating in twenty-three percent. So it's a great partnership with them. There's a net benefit. This is very important to point out. You know, in the previous slide, it's what we are giving to the developer, but there's also a huge net benefit to this entire development. And for the city, over, the TERS is for twenty years, but over thirty years, it's a, a net benefit of sixty-five million to the, to the city and twenty-eight million to the county. So, you know, that's, that's a great return on our investment. Continuing on with the net benefits for the community, they're proposing, and the developers are here. I didn't introduce them, but I know you'll have questions for them. I'll introduce them shortly. They're proposing twenty-five million dollars in capital investment to this project, over eight hundred full-time jobs, and two point five million plus in annual sales tax for our community, and also one million dollars in property tax. And it's very important to note that this is completely a performance-based incentive agreement. If the developer doesn't perform, then they don't get their incentives.
Victoria, can you speak to those performance metrics?
Yes, I will get to that. Yeah, there's another slide. And also important to point out that there's a lot of retail leakage that is happening within our county and within our city. Sixty-one percent of our, of retail visits leak outside of Hayes County. So this is why it's very important for our, and it was, it was a, a big incentive for our county commissioners to partner with us, because we can see that a lot of our residents are shopping at South Park Meadows, or they'll go to New Braunfels, or all the way into the core of Austin to meet some of their retail and entertainment needs that this project will help solve. These are just, again, you know, retail leakage that we've seen before. These are the benchmarks that we, that I had spoke about. So the developer must permit a hundred thousand square feet of the project within two years of the effective date, which will be when the agreement is signed. So that's their first benchmark that they must meet. Any chapter three eighty or three eighty-one sales tax reimbursements would only commence after that minimum of a hundred thousand square feet has been built, so that they could start receiving their reimbursements. There is a cap on the incentive, so it's, you know, even though the TERS is for twenty years, if their incentive cap is in fourteen years, then the incentive is complete. And then the city will just continue to get all the benefits of the project. And then the second benchmark will be the two hundred thousand square feet that they permit within four years, and no bond sales will be issued until the developer has built the two hundred thousand square feet of retail. And then there's, and then the last one will be the three hundred thousand square feet and the urban district, what we're calling the urban district. There's some photos I can show you shortly. So the whole project, and if the urban district is not built within nine years, then the rebates will be suspended. Here's quickly, I think we showed this last time. This is the overview of the entire development. What you see right in the center is that urban district that we're talking about. The Vibe is an important component of this project as well. And you will see parts of the Vibe in another map. This is just quickly going through what we've already seen, but this is a center view of the, of the urban core. Here we have some more outlines. There's, there's multifamily component as well, towards the back of the development. It'll be built by Transwestern, and here's some of the renderings. I believe I'm now getting into the annexation portion, so that appellate will take over on that aspect. Thank you.
Will Atkinson, Director of Planning for the Record. As stated in summary, the second item on tonight's agenda is the area to be annexed, which is outlined in yellow. It's a little over thirty-eight acres. The area in blue is already annexed and it's zoned ag. And this is one of the, one of the components built into it from both the zoning and a PUD and TERS and everything like that. And then after that, following annexation, there will be zoning. Right here is the image of the proposed two base zoning districts. It'll be further modified in the zoning within itself. So approximately seventy-two acres of retail and twenty-nine acres of R three three. These are approximate numbers. Right here, we have the land plan. We have the multifamily and the vertical mixed use in the urban district, and then the retail for the rest of it. This project is an inclusive of the VMU. We'll have approximately four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial space built out. And the multifamily will consist of a maximum of four hundred and twenty-six units of one, two and three bedrooms for the apartments. From a circulation plan, as you see right here on the map, the project will be deeding over right-of-way to us, I think to somewhere in the approximate value of five and a half million dollars between Cars Crossing and BB Road for the road bonds. And then there will be construction of, in the yellow dash line of the Vibe Trail. Internally, there's also a Vibe Trail spur that runs between the front row of the commercial retail and the big box stores. And in turn, additional internal circulation paths for standard sidewalks and what have you, making sure there's adequate connectivity throughout the site from a, a, both a golf cart and a pedestrian perspective. And then here are some retail elevations. These will primarily be accounted for in the follow-up development agreement on the nineteenth. But some standard examples of what you might expect from the big box at the top, some more nuanced and other types of elevations for both the area along between the, the front and second level, and also the urban district. One of the items that we are, we have worked with the developer to work on is conditional use permits will be administratively approved by staff. But if we cannot come to an agreement on those elevations, then it'll have an appellate body with the planning and zoning commission and ultimately council if, as a second tier of appellate. Let me see here. Oh, there we go. It's finally speeding up. Okay. Here are some elevations of both the vertical mixed use and the multifamily. It will be one project by Transwestern. The upper left-hand corner is the vertical mixed use that's on the urban district in the upper left-hand corner on the map. And then the top central image is at the very end of the urban district. As you're looking into it is what you'll see. And then the rest of the images are different views of the couple of the buildings they have on site. Some key variances to the code and code modifications. They're requesting a retail height variance from up to sixty-five feet by right from forty-five feet in its current fashion. A hotel height variance from forty-five feet up to ninety feet. A multifamily height variance from forty-five feet to sixty-five feet. And they're looking at parking ratios on the multifamily for a maximum of one and a half spaces per unit, plus five percent for guest parking. On the, on those parking ratios, most of the units in the multifamily will be one or two bedrooms. So it largely plays out from an average standpoint, that'll work out pretty well. Right here, we have the master sign plan, showing the different types of pylon signs and monument signs that you'll see. and monument signs that you'll see throughout the project. And we're also wanting to include roof mounted signs from, in the, primarily in the urban district is where you'll see them. We do believe those have an aesthetic feel to, that is something that staff is agreeable to incorporating into this, and we think it'll provide a good product for the, for this project overall. From restrictions on the retail, the Planning and Zoning Commission last week voted 6-0 to recommend complete removal of the gas station and car washes from the draft PUD ordinance. There's also other aspects of this on the prohibited uses, where there's a temporary limit of 10 years on some of these other uses as well. The result of this was negotiated between staff and the developer as well. And here are the three items. I've already mentioned one of them, which was the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission action, recommending the allowed uses of gas station and car wash from a full removal of Exhibit A. They wanted to clarify Section 50-1 with the understanding that this section only applies to the existing overhead electrical along I-35, and the said service may remain above ground per their recommendation. And in Exhibit C, Chart 2-RS, to adjust the impervious cover maximum to a per-lot basis from the entire development. And the development team recommends the following approvals: annexation, PUD, based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and then also the creation of the TERS and approval of the preliminary project and finance plan. And then the last image is one of the renderings that they provided to us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. This item does have public hearings, two public hearings, actually three all in total. So I think before we provide our commentary, this would be a good opportunity to open those up unless there are an objection. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go back to, well, I can't do 13 yet because I haven't opened it, but I'll do the public hearings on 15 and 16. So regarding annexation, if there are no objections, I'm gonna, for item 15, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Seeing now the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on the annexation? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close that public hearing. Next is a public hearing of the zoning and PUD ordinance. If there are no objections, I'm gonna open that public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on the zoning?
Regarding the PUD?
Yes, sir.
Itself, just to reiterate that, that it's stipulated that if there are conflict between the development agreement and the PUD, the PUD, which is an ordinance, prevails if there's any conflict about any kind of land usage or anything like that, which seems to me to be kind of radical non. I would understand, my limited knowledge of law, is that the ordinance of PUD would prevail because it's a law over development agreement, which is a contract, at least that's my invention. But in any case, there is no statement in there about a mediation mechanism around any conflicts about land use and so forth, and site perhaps and all that. And so that is of concern to me, because that means that, for instance, as we're moving on here, it's out of P&amp;Z Commission's hands. That's the last we've seen of this for the most part. But my concern would be that some of these things are beyond the city council past a certain point, that the PUD has the governance over that parcel of land and its use, and the council, P&amp;Z, none of the city authorities elected or appointed have any ability to have a say-so about what happens on that property. So that's one concern, and perhaps the city attorney or others could illuminate to me, you know, where I'm not correct on this or uninformed, but this is certainly a concern that I would have, because conflicts happen. And I would hate to see something like that in the PUD that nixes your development agreement, which I know you put a lot of time as staff and council into. So just my concern or thoughts on that particular matter.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Ms. Seitz, do you want to, do you want to speak to that?
Mayor Council, Paige Seitz, city attorney for the record. The, the PUD zoning will govern the land uses, and if there is a dispute over whether the PUD is being properly administered, there's a process in your ordinances where the finding of the staff can be appealed either up to the council or to a board of adjustment, depending on what the dispute is at issue. And so the, the ordinances in place would, would address conflicts.
Okay, so what is the difference between the process you're outlining and the recommendation from the planning and zoning for their, if there's a dispute between staff and the developer on something regarding the site plan, it can be appealed to P&amp;Z and then to city council? Are we talking about two different things?
I, you have a whole set of ordinances that address disputes and how those are revised when it comes to permits and site plan approvals. And so I would recommend that those processes stand. There shouldn't be any changes that come out of a zoning commission recommendation with the PUD to your fundamental dispute resolution processes in your ordinances.
So you're recommending that we don't take the planning and zoning's recommendation, or that we do with the understanding that the process you've outlined is also available to us?
I don't think I understand what the P&amp;Z's recommendation is about dispute resolution. I would need some input on that from Mr. Atkinson.
So the rec- Can you go back to that slide? The recommendation slide?
So at the, Will Atkinson, Director of Planning for the Record, at the November 29th meeting, actually the November 20th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission provided these three bullet points for the recommended approvals from the, from the action taken. So the, the item that Commissioner Siegel brought up in public hearing was not part of these three items from a dispute resolution standpoint.
Okay.
As I understand it, based on what he's saying, it's more of a concern that he has, but from the action taken, that was not part of it. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So without having all the full ordinances in front of us, depending on what aspect of the project is, we may potentially have a dispute at, depending on whatever the situation is, when we're working with the development team versus permits and what have you, our ordinances that are applicable to that aspect will dictate, is what Paige is saying. So if, for example, there is a dispute between a setback based on what the interpretation of the ordinance is versus what staff is, then if we can't reconcile that from a logical standpoint based on what the PUD says, then we'll take that to the board of adjustment ultimately. If it's, for example, the conditional use permit, how we've drafted it in there, it's an administrative approval by staff from a review standpoint, like the elevations and how pretty the buildings are supposed to look. If we can't come to a resolution at an administrative level with the development team, then we'll bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an appellate body. And if they can't agree on a decision, then it'll come to y'all from that perspective. As two examples.
Does anybody have any commentary on that specific topic with regards to appeal in the process? Okay, we, obviously this is a contract negotiation, and so there's certain elements of our commentary that probably needs to be reserved until it's time to make the final vote. So it's my understanding that the vote we're taking tonight is essentially a first reading type of vote, and the majority of the items are coming back on the 19th. Is that correct? So no action that we're taking now is final, but we're, we're preparing to take final action on the 19th, if we, if we move it out of this phase?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I, there, we, we had a, have had, as has been noted, many, many lengthy discussions with regards to this development. Most of those, because of the contract nature of the negotiation, are performed in executive session, so that we can maintain our negotiating position. So if there are no objections, I'd like to make a motion to incorporate the feedback that we provided each other and staff in executive session.
Second.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make the motion now. I'm just making sure y'all are okay with me making that motion.
Got to add the-
Yeah, I'm gonna read it out.
Okay.
Yes. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 53 for the purpose of rezoning approximately 101 acres to plan unit development, and direct staff and the city attorney to bring back the following changes to the PUD and related agreements for the project. Number one, the utility lines along I-35 shall be buried at developer's expense. Number two, after the expiration of the 10-year period for the restricted uses listed in the PUD, the project must comply with the land use restrictions in effect at that time. Number three, impact fees for the development will not be grandfathered. And number four, 10% of the retail space located in the urban park district must be owner occupied. And that was a motion.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by council member Rizzo. Is there discussion on the motion, Ms. Seitz?
Did you vote on the annexation ordinance yet?
No, I'm just reading your, your motion, but we can, we can vote on that annexation. It's up, so I can amend my motion to also approve that, if that's what you're saying needs to happen.
I would like action on the annexation ordinance first.
Can I incorporate that, since both items are before us? Can I incorporate the approval of the annexation ordinance into the motion on the table?
I'd prefer you have the annexation ordinance separate.
All right, I'm gonna withdraw that motion. Is that amenable to the second? All right, first thing we're gonna do is make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 15, annexing 38.0493 acres of land at 301 BB Road. All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by council member Hyzer, that we approve the annexation. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number, so you want me to take up 14 and 16 together Or just vote on 16 next?
Just vote on 16.
All right, regarding number 16, which is still before us, I'd like to make a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 53 for the purpose of rezoning approximately 101 acres to plan unit development, and direct staff and city attorney to bring back the following changes to the PUD and related agreements for the project. One, utility lines along I-35 shall be buried at developer's expense. Two, after the expiration of the 10-year period for the restricted uses listed in the PUD, the project must comply with the land use restrictions in effect at that time. Three, impact fees for the development will not be grandfathered. And four, 10% of the retail space located in the urban park district must be owner occupied. All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by council member Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item 16 with those amendments. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Now we'll go back to Agenda Item Number 13, because 14 is the TERS. All right, 13 is the public hearing.
If you can note that you're objecting to that being finally passed on first-
Yes, I'd like to make a note that we're objecting to that being finally passed. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 13, public hearing concerning the creation of reinvestment zone five pursuant to the provisions of chapter 311 of the Texas Government Code. If there are no objections, this item is for a public hearing. I'm gonna open up that public hearing now. Seeing none, is, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak regarding the creation of the TERS? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, it's now closed. Next up is Agenda Item 14, which is still technically on the table, consideration approval and ordinance creating the contiguous geographic area for reinvestment zone. Number five is, Ms. Libby, you got a presentation on this. Well, we took them all up, and then we didn't. It's all good, though.
So I'm just, whoops, I'm just gonna go back to one of Will's prior slides, because I think that'll be most applicable for our discussion. So what you have before you tonight is a ordinance to consider creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone to support this development. Included with that ordinance is also preliminary project and finance plan. This finance plan would come back to city council on December 19th for final approval after it's been approved by the TERS board. This ordinance also creates the TERS and appoints the initial members of the TERS board. Each member of city council is a member of the TERS board, and then since we have county participation in this TERS, Hayes County will also have two participants that will be appointed to the board by the Commissioners Court. Within the TERS itself, it's contemplated that there's gonna be 50% ad valorem tax contribution by both the city and county, and also 50% sales tax by the city. The county is also contributing 50% of their sales tax to the project, but that is gonna flow through a chapter 381 agreement between the county and the developer directly, because chapter 311 of the tax code doesn't allow the county's sales tax revenues to flow through the TERS. With the slide that I brought up, you see, sorry, that's the, the summary of amounts that'll be payable through the TERS financing. Both the right-of-way land acquisition and drainage storm improvements that'll be contributed to this project will be contributed from funds other than the TERS. So for TERS incentives, you're really looking at those public infrastructure three COs and then the 380, 381 contributions for these financings. So I'm here to answer any questions you all may have. Mark McClainy with Samco, the city's financial advisor, is here. And then John Snyder with P3 Works, who's drafted the service and, or the project and finance plan, is available as well for any questions.
All right, does anybody have any commentary or questions regarding this TERS? I know we've discussed it quite a bit.
It's a TERS PID, right?
It is a, no, no PID.
It's a TERS, right?
Yes. Motion, Councilman Parsley.
Okay, so just so I understand, the city of Kyle incentive will come up to $31,373,780, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Out of that incentive, what public infrastructure are we, are we using? Where are we using that $8.5 million?
So the public infrastructure is primarily related to water sewer improvements within the project itself. I think there's a limited amount of streets or roadway access getting to and from the development, component parts of the Vibe Trail, and then some landscaping beautification associated with the park.
Underground and utilities.
Underground utilities.
Electric utilities as well is a component of that.
So what utilities, what utilities are we undergrounding?
Electric utilities, some of the electrical infrastructure.
So that will come out of the city part? It wouldn't be the development, the developers that have to do that?
That'd be part of the public infrastructure improvements that are here.
Okay. I had a question regarding the roads that will be created for this TERS. And so I wonder if the, who could explain to me what are gonna be the improvements in the roads, what roads will be created when we do this development?
What, what new roads would be created? So Kohler's would be built, it would be a new roadway that'd be constructed on the, the right-of-way that'd be created through this, this agreement. We'd also have an expansion of BB, and there would be some internal roadways within the project, and the Vibe Trail, I think is Stephanie was trying to articulate. Is that the question? I wanna make sure I answered what you're looking for.
So is the developer, is the developer doing any, any improvements to the city of Kyle? What are they giving to the city of Kyle? What improvements are they providing to us that are not being paid through that $31 million?
It's all onsite improvements that they're making on that site, and the utilities and the access points are all serving that site. So that's where the public infrastructure is being constructed.
So besides that, are they doing anything else? Are you guys providing any other kind of-
There are no, there are no other public infrastructure improvements that are gonna go into the site other than what'll be funded through the TERS. Any other developer funds that'll come into the project is either by way of private investment, or there are certain private improvements. They gave us a list of all the costs associated with the project, and we went through those costs and determined what could be public improvements that could be city-funded. And that's what you see with the line item for public infrastructure COs that could be city-financed. Any other costs related to infrastructure improvements that we're put, they're putting in are being funded through the 380, 381 agreements with the city and the county.
Okay. And so another question is, I see that the cash inflow is going to be around $65 million, and that will be like up to that amount that it is possible that we get until 2053, is that correct? Where did I see that?
I believe that's the next, the next slide, Stephanie.
So there we go. So is that the estimated cash inflow that will come directly to our general fund? Or is that in total, and then from that? Or is that in total and then from that?
No, that should be the net benefit. So this should be money to City of Kyle after those prior amounts are paid.
Okay. All right. That's a lot of money.
Quick question.
Councilmember Ziegler?
So just to get back to the number, I know we've discussed them before. We're collecting $2 million in sales tax and $1 million in property tax out of this TERS every year?
I think those are current projections.
Projections, so would it then be accurate that if we recouped all of that in 10 years, the incentive would be repaid?
Yes.
So then, as councilmember Parsley said, the 65 million, is that at the end of the 30-year TERS? What, the net benefit part?
Yes.
Subtracted the 30, I guess, the 30 initial?
So I think maybe a way to think of it, between now and 2053, it's projected that the TERS would generate $96 million of revenues. Of those monies, 61 would go to the city, 35 would go to the developer. Now that's.
65 there.
Yeah, sorry. But probably inexact math because, you know, the, the money for the right-of-way land acquisition and drainage improvements are not going to flow through the TERS, so those would have to be backed out.
So we collect about 16% in sales tax a year? Is that kind of what we get?
Uh, no, we get 1.5% of any sales.
So, so our sales tax for the City of Kyle, isn't it 16 million that we're getting?
Oh, the total?
Yeah.
16 to 17 million, yes, total.
So this is going to be 3, 3 million, pretty good number to, to the total. Thank you.
Big project.
I wanted to confirm that, that there'd be enough sales tax collected.
And just to keep in mind, just to add to it, is that we're getting two major roads, needed roads through this project. The first one is BB, the straightening of BB Road. The other one's going to be the new Kohler's Crossing, which is definitely going to help alleviate a lot of the traffic when you're looking at connectivity from north, south, east, west. This is going to be a really good project. I think knowing that you're putting two roadways, you're, you're straightening out a roadway and you're putting a major roadway through this property is something to keep in mind as well. So we're, we're definitely, while the project is huge, it's, the impact that we're having is with our roadways is huge as well. So it, I, I see it as something really good for the community when we're looking at road infrastructure.
All right, Councilmember Heiser?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14, creating what will be known as TERS 5.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo that we approve Agenda Item 14. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries six to one. Already did 13, did 15, did 16. All right, we got 17, 20, and 21 left.
Mayor, if, if I could, I just want to confirm with the city secretary. There was a lot of motions, a lot of items. I want to make sure that we opened and closed all three public hearings. Was that correct? Okay, thank you. I knew you had it, I just wanted to double check.
I had it, but you're throwing me off. But I got it, I got it there in the end.
Thank you, John.
All right. No, I don't always have it. I miss those kind of things all the time, actually. Let's be real. All right, we're going to bring up Agenda Item Number 17. This item has a public hearing, an ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas Code of Ordinances, rezoning approximately 32 acres of land from retail services, approximately 67 acres of land from R-33, and 56 acres from warehouse to plan unit development located for property, at property located at 3040 Kyle Crossing in Hayes County, Texas. P&amp;Z voted six to zero to approve with staff recommended changes. And as I said, this item has a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jason Lutz, senior planner, for the record. Yes, so a quick summary of this project. The applicant is requesting a plan unit development district for this property. This PUD is going to establish several development standards to govern the project. It'll also incorporate some variances to our existing zoning code. The project is going to establish regulations for two distinct districts over this project, the hospital tract and the lake park tract. So I'll try not to confuse you as I go through the process of explaining which one's which. The PUD is also going to provide a secondary set of development standards for the hospital tract itself, should a hospital not be developed. So I'll kind of tackle that on the third section of this presentation. Both tracts are each going to have their own development agreements. Those will be considered by City Council on December 19th that will further regulate the development. And sorry, I know I'm talking fast, so if you need me to slow down, just please interrupt. So here's kind of the project timelining. Tonight, we're at the first reading of our ordinance establishing the PUD. We'll have the second reading on the 19th as well as the consideration of both development agreements for the hospital tract and the lake park tract. So here is the project location. You can see this is just north of the HEB site with connections on 1626 and Kyle Crossing. This is the project concept plan. Again, the top portion of the image is what's being called the hospital tract and the southern portion is what's being called the lake park tract. So again, as I mentioned, the PUD is related to two development agreements. Those development agreements, even though they're not part of tonight's discussion, kind of wanted to discuss how they're incorporated into the PUD. They will remove those existing zoning districts of warehouse and multifamily. It's also going to prohibit the typical garden-style apartments. It will establish, those will establish additional living unit equivalents to serve the property. There's a current model now, they're looking at increasing those as part of the development agreement. Does allow cluster development to provide additional green space, which provides a little bit more density on, on the exact location. And then it's, the big ones for us are donation of land for the marketplace extension, additional land for the expansion of the city's water facilities, and additional lands for public parks and extension of the vibe trail. And then finally, provide additional criteria for building materials, designs, and signage. So a little bit more on the development agreements. The lake park tract is going to be, consists of multifamily residential. The DA will allow for sale or for rent. The vertical mixed-use residential will also be for sale or for rent. And then your typical uses, commercial office, retail, restaurant, and basically the retail services land use district. The city will receive, basically prohibits various uses similar to what we've seen in other developments, typical list of, of land uses that we don't like. Gas stations, standalone banks, auto-related commercial. This will allow property to be developed as a hotel conference center. The DA may contemplate additional swap or donation of that conference center to the city's control. And then again, public parkland as well as private parkland open to the public and then architectural standards. So this would be the hospital tract. Currently, they're looking at a seven-story hospital, approximately 550 beds. There are going to be eight-level parking garage. That will be constructed once they hit those triggers for a certain number of beds. Again, you can see the open space trail is kind of highlighted in yellow on the northern side of this property or in the image. Again, acreage for the FM 1626 water tank site, it's kind of grayed out, but you can see it near the red portion of the highlighted area. And then again, acreage for Marketplace Road, which is going to be part of our bond program. So here is the concept of the lake park plan. Again, you'll see what we are calling vertical mixed-use building corridors. Those are highlighted in blue. And then the areas with the red hatched are those vertical mixed-use buildings. Again, non-residential on the ground floor, so true, true mixed-use. Real quick overview of the proposed land use. And again, I'm just focusing on the lake park portion of the property right now. Again, multifamily residential and vertical mixed-use, those are for rent or sale. Commercial office, retail, again prohibits gas station, standalone banks, provides site for a hotel conference center, and then public and private parkland open to the public. The signs are included into the variances because of our current code. So what this will do will allow I-35 sign regulations to apply to all of the development, just not those that front I-35. It does allow a reduction for setbacks to create a more urban environment. So typically 10 feet on the front side corner and then zero on the interior side yards. Where setbacks do cause public infrastructure to be located under pavement, this DA or, and this PUD will allow for private streets to be built and maintained by the developer. It also waives some of the lot minimum sizes areas. Allows for a reduction in lot frontages and also allows cross-access easements between lots if they don't have frontage themselves. Height, so maximum's 120 feet and 14 stories. That would be for the hotel conference center itself and some office towers identified in the land use plan. However, 10 stories for multifamily and vertical mixed-use structures would be the max on, on those. The I-35 overlay design standards, again, if it's four stories or less, they shall comply with the existing IH overlay standards. But five stories and up shall be designed in accordance to some of the following exhibits and what's implemented into the development agreements, which you'll see next, next meeting. So these would be images of what some of the, the buildings would look like at five stories. And these are just for reference, but they are incorporated as exhibits. I can go back if you'd like. Some of the other standards or variances we have is impervious cover. So currently, the project has a no detention study for the entire site, which allows 85% impervious cover based on the overall site. Because of the creek and drainage area, you don't want to hold that water up. You want to release it so you don't cause any flooding upstream. So it's going to allow that. That's why you see some of the clustering in there. But ultimately, 85% is, is where they're at for the site. Density, there's no units per acre density, so to speak, that you normally find in your R-33 zoning or any other zoning district. The density is going to be mostly a function of the amount of LUEs that are available, the height of the building, current setbacks of the lot, parking requirements. So we'll let the development kind of dictate its own size on a per-lot basis. As we move into minimum unit sizes, our, some of our codes have certain minimum sizes for apartment complex. We're going to waive that as part of this PUD. However, they do still need to meet the adopted international building code. Those standards have minimum sizes for bathrooms, bedrooms, depending on occupancy. Staff is very comfortable with that. Again, parking, allow shared parking between uses. Here, we're 1.5 spaces per unit plus 10% total for guest parking. Restaurants are parked at one space per 100 gross square foot to account for customer staff. Bless you. And that's basically done, as a quick change, we've noticed some issues with our current restaurant parking. So this is kind of the standard that staff is going to move forward with on more developments. This will not only handle the customers, but also the staff for the restaurants themselves. And then hotels are parked at 1.1 space per unit. There are no parking maximums on this development as found within our normal code. Alternative review process, so I-35 overlay development standards are going to be reviewed by staff, not P&amp;Z, but they're going to be reviewed for adherence to this PUD and the associated DAs. Site plans are going to be submitted for each side pad, pad site through the normal review process. However, this PUD does allow for some extensions on the, when those approval expiration dates apply. When we talk about streets, again, I mentioned earlier, allows cross-access easements and no lot frontage, allows for private streets maintained by the developer, and allows for block lengths to be extended via approved means through the adopted fire code. So as long as fire code is good with that, city staff is okay with those block lengths. Other allowances per this PUD is going to allow for 10-foot fencing. Some of the property, as it's going through its phases for development, may retain its ag exempt status. At that point, we would not be sending code officers down to require mowing on certain portions, maybe adjacent to some of the developed properties just for a safety standpoint. This project does allow in the PUD for overland drainage, so that's not to say that there's not going to be storm drain and we're going to have open ditches. This is merely for areas where we have utilities, gas lines, vibe trail that we're, it's not practical install, to install storm. This does, development does allow projects to be built within the 100 feet, 100-foot stream setback. That is just a buffer we have around our area. So on one of the images, there's a little circular area right next to the lake. That's proposed to be kind of a restaurant site, so they're trying to get as close to that as possible. Municipal utility easements are only going to be required where utilities are located. Currently, we have a blanket on all four sides of a lot line, so this will just be as, as needed for the project. So having talked lake park, yes, sir?
Just to go back, is any of this property in a floodplain, Jason?
Yes, there's some floodplain running through the middle of the property.
But will it be developed there?
No, the floodplain development will be subject to our, our traditional floodplain review. So floodway, most likely not. If they're in the 100-year floodplain, we have some floodplain development standards that they have to go through and meet, so we're not waiving any of those standards or criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So switching gears, this is the hospital tract. We're going to call this concept plan option A. So this is the development of the, of the hospital. So you'll see seven stories. There will be possibly a helipad located on the roof, parking garage, and then several medical office buildings. Again, sizes are laid out in the PUD and in the development agreement. The kind of teal space you see is possible future hospital expansion through the life of the property. So the hospital is giving themselves plenty of room to grow for, as the city grows and their needs grow. So I think I mentioned it, seven floors, approximately almost 700,000 square feet, approximately 550 beds. The four other medical office buildings are 80,000 square feet, square feet each. Again, this will allow other medical offices, support uses, gift shops, cafeterias, things of that nature, and as mentioned, a helipad. Signs, the signs for the hospital actually have their own alternative sign package for that hospital. Those are going to be incorporated into, into the PUD. It does allow reduction for setbacks, so 50 feet is required setback, but those may be adjusted via site plan approval. Again, no lot minimum size areas, lot frontages. That's very similar to what we discussed on the lake park parcel. Height's going to be a little bit different on the hospital tract. We're going to a maximum of 150 feet and that's for the hospital and the helipad. Again, impervious cover, the entire site's at 85%. That's why it's a clustered kind of development. On parking here, this will allow parking to be in front of the principal building. So you saw on the site plan, it's going to be kind of standard hospital. They do have your, to meet our standard screening requirements for those parking areas. Again, streets, very same as the lake park tract, allows cross-access easements, allows private streets, allows block lengths to be extended via approved methods of the fire code. Other variances on the hospital side will be a 12-foot fence in height. That would be around our water tank facility. That's something the DA is contemplating right now. Our code requires eight masonry. We're going to increase that to 12 as part of our project. We also have staff approval for conditional use permits for building elevation. So that's something a little bit different. It's not going to go to P&amp;Z like your typical I-35. It'll be a staff-level review. And then again, ags exempt properties, won't have to mow unless they're kind of near certain developed properties and it's a safety issue. So now I'm kind of switching gears again, we're hospital, option B, should the hospital not be developed? This is kind of the mixed-use development that you would see on the site. It would be focused mostly some retail areas, multifamily, and then kind of senior-oriented multifamily located on this site, assisted living, memory care, things of those nature. I kind of talked on that. It will allow some vertical mixed-use areas if the hospital doesn't get developed. Again, commercial areas, it does provide parkland, private and public. Again, the private will be open to the public. And then all the rest of the development standards for option B of the hospital tract will follow the, the lake park tract development standards that are kind of outlined at the beginning. So when we look at the parkland dedication, again, that will also be covered in the development agreement you're going to see next week, or next meeting. The lake park tracts may donate approximately 20 acres around that lake and dam facility in Spillway. Private parkland against, will be open to the public. The hospital tract shall provide an easement for a section of the vibe. However, parkland fees for residential units shall be paid at the time of site plan, so the city's not waiving those parkland dedication fees. So again, that's a benefit for, for Parks Department in, in kind of managing that space. And then additional land will be donated to the city again for marketplace and the expansion of our water facilities. I don't want to let you know, I want to let you know, this is just kind of for your information. This is not the exact parkland that will be dedicated. Those, those boundaries may change, but this is the general idea of what the city. Those boundaries may change, but this is the general idea of what the city will be receiving as part of any later donation agreement. And you will have an opportunity to vote on that. That would come as a separate item. So P&amp;Z recommended by a vote 6-0 approval of the requested zoning change. They did have these following amendments. These were staff-recommended amendments. They were really just kind of trying to fine-tune the document with what we were negotiating. So modify Section 53724. This was just to make sure that we're matching the language in the PUD ordinance with some of our changes. Delete Section 41-139. The developers was going to adhere to that section of code, but it was still listed in their requested variances. And then the same with Section 41-146. P&amp;Z also recommended the following changes. Add Chapter 29 sign standards and permits. These sections are the ones that will allow the wall signs, the canopy signs. You kind of discuss how the I-35 overlay signage and internal illuminated lights will apply to the whole thing. And then, again, same kind of on D1 because we're talking about multiple sections for multiple tracks. So that's why you see some repetitive language there. So staff does recommend the following changes in addition to P&amp;Z recommended changes. This, again, this is just kind of some last-minute changes discussing on the DA to make everything match. So we wanted to delete Sections 41-47 G2B. It's discussing LUEs in the packet, but that's going to be addressed during the development agreement, so we felt it wasn't needed in the PUD ordinance, so. These are your options here before you deny it. Approve the requested zoning change as requested by the applicant. Approve with staff and P&amp;Z recommended changes. You can approve it with our changes, with your own changes, or you can deny the requested zoning change. So obviously, staff recommends Option 2 or 3 at this point, but I will turn it over for anybody for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Letz. Does anybody have any questions?
Real quick, just wanted to ask, the first question is, just making sure we codify in the agreement that the public areas stay public. Even with time, sometimes development will find maybe some issues with some of the public areas and try to close them off. Making sure it's codified that we keep those open, especially with the vibe trail there. The other thing, what's the tallest building, refresh my memory, what's the tallest building here in this project?
So it could be the hospital at 14 stories on the Lake Park tract, I'm sorry, the hotel conference center. Or the hospital at 150 on the other. Just kind of depends on how those are designed.
How tall is the hospital, I'm sorry?
The hospital can go up to 150 with the helipad and appurtenances. The Lake Park tract, the highest they could go is 120 or 14 stories.
Okay, on those, did we think about what impact would have with our fire department? Did we have any conversations about that?
Yes, I did discuss that with the fire department. So anytime you get a building that size, there's no ladder truck that has that capability. So it would be on the developer. There's fire code, building code standards that they'll have to implement. They are costly. But as long as they're satisfying the fire code and the building code, fire was okay with that.
I know the fire department talked about maybe a larger ladder truck or something in that aspect with some of the taller buildings near the hospital. Is that something, conversation we're still having or not?
Not that we've been engaged with. We're kind of focusing on the zoning and the development agreements. I think the fire department, again, that's an ES emergency services district. We kind of don't get involved into their negotiations as far as what their needs are. But I'd be glad to share the applicant's phone number with them so they can call them.
Brian, have you had any conversations with the fire department or not? All right, thank you.
Question two, Jason.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, Daniela, go ahead.
So what happens if we go ahead and do the rezoning now, but we don't have a development agreement in front of us?
This would be just the first reading, so you don't have to waive your second reading. We can bring those back up and tie them all in at the next council meeting.
Because I kind of like to see the development agreement before we do the rezoning, otherwise we're going to lose all kinds of leverage that we have if we wanted to make any changes. So is there any way that this could be postponed? I'm excited about this project, but is there any way that can be postponed so that comes together for us to know what the development agreement looks like?
I'll have to turn that over to the, I mean, the attorney, but I do want to answer a follow-up question before we get off on that. The parkland, the parkland dedication will be a separate agreement, so we haven't worked out any time limits or terms on that. But I'll make a note that you don't want those public areas to revert back at any point.
Yeah, and the other ones are also the areas where maybe a food court or something around there is open. I mean, because later on, they could come back and say, you know what, we're just going to use it for the residents. We're not going to do anything else. I know pool areas, things like that, that's off limits, but there are some areas that are going to be important to the vibe trail, making sure that we have the public access to those moving forward at all times. It's going to be important because they could want to shut it down for just, you know what, we're getting too much trash, we're spending too much time on it, let's shut it down. No, it's going to be important to the vibe trail, so making sure we keep all that open.
Yes, sir. I'll make a note of that.
So I would just say, again, this is the first reading of the PUD, and so you'll see the second reading along with the development agreements at the next meeting on the 19th. So at that time, you'd be able to see how they complement each other and work with each other. We tried to give you an outline of all of the deal points, so you could see this in the presentation. But those other agreements will come forward back on the 19th.
But, so what happens if we approve this and we don't like what we see during the development agreement and then we have already approved the first reading of the rezoning?
You don't have to approve the second reading, so you could postpone that item until you were able to get the agreement the way you wanted it, or you could deny it.
I just don't see, I don't see really all the elevations of, you know, what things are going to look like. I don't know exactly how many units are going to be added. I know that it's just been a request for rezoning, but I would like to see more of that. Is there any incentive being requested? I just don't have enough information to go ahead and do even a first reading for a rezoning. I would like for that to come together like we normally get it all together. Like we just approved, I mean, I voted no, but, you know, just like the other one that just came out.
You didn't see the development agreement on that one either, so that...
That had a lot more information than what I'm able to see in this one.
We'll be glad to provide any information we can. What's the information that you're looking for that we need to provide in addition to the information that we've...
I would like to see, you know, how many units are going to be after the rezoning of the R-33 and then what, you know, how much is the commercial going to, like, in terms of acreage? What type of business are they targeting as they're going to come, a hotel? And, you know, what kind of hotel are we trying to pursue? I love the fact that they are dedicating so much space to parkland, and I am like, I'm going to be fully in favor of this. I just would like to see more information before we do the rezoning.
We should have the acreages that we could provide you.
Yeah, let me pull that exhibit up real quick. We did have a number in there. I don't remember offhand what the commercial square footages were. I can tell you the density is not going to be nearly as defined because we're looking at the density based on the LUE count. And so we have the number of LUEs, but depending on how that project is developed, those LUEs could be at a 0.5 or they could be at a 0.7. But approximately, I believe, 2,100 LUEs for the Lake Park tract is what I believe. So that could be anywhere from 21,000 to 4,000 units possibly, depending on how that broke up.
Are you guys requesting any sort of incentive?
Well, I also want to clarify, this is a land plan and not a development per se, so it's an entitlement process for that. So the development may have an incentive that would be requested in the future, but this has been a complex negotiation with the zoning for the entire Lake Park tract and the hospital tract together as one PUD, which a large component of that incentive is building the road through the property, which obviously makes the road more valuable as we look at the drainage and various elements associated with it. But there's been a lot of discussion about how many LUEs the property would be provided and what type of entitlements that would be provided, the density, those kinds of things. So there's quite a bit going on in this agreement, but it's not been a financial incentive like the other.
Okay. So what happens if we were to want to make changes to like the architectural standards, in my opinion? And once we have the zoning passed, then how do we ensure that, you know, we can do that negotiation with them?
I'm sorry. Councilmember, when you see the agreement at the next meeting, you're welcome to take that agreement up before the zoning, so you can understand that and review it. And if there's, if you have a concern about the terms of the development agreement, then both the zoning, second reading and the development agreement can be postponed to take direction from council to revise any of those documents.
And just for you, if you'd like, page 53, so the draft ordinance was broken up into two sections because of uploading limitations. But if Part 1 of the draft ordinance, page 53, there's a detailed breakdown, kind of floor by floor, retail space, office space. So that's going to be where you kind of discuss how much retail, how much office, multifamily units that you'll kind of see there. So if you have specific questions on those, I'd be glad to answer those tonight. The applicant is here as well. But this is probably a little bit different than the other PUDs that we just saw tonight. Those are, they're actively in development. This is more of kind of an entitlement. I don't think there's, the plans are that fleshed out at this point, except for the hospital tract.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, I have sort of the same feelings and concerns as Daniela. I'd like to see more details of what's coming in. But the other issue that I was looking at is they may donate the 20 acres. Like, I would really love to see that as a park in that area of the city, so people could enjoy it outside. If we don't get that 20 acres, what other open space acreage do we have coming in into the Part 1 of the hospital? No doubt, how much of it is in there? Because I like to see how it's all going to look like together.
I believe the hospital tract, to correct me if I'm wrong, is two-acre donation on the vibe trail. If the, if ultimately the park does not get dedicated, then at that point, though, they would have to go back and we would have to do parkland dedication fees. So it may not be in that area. We'll make sure that the DA discusses, again, some of the other comments was it's open to the public for life. But again, that's more of a different donation agreement. It's going to be referenced in the development agreement, but it wouldn't be for your consideration as part of that meeting because we're just not ready to have that conversation just yet.
So there, I guess there was a thought about donating that 20 acres. So what's kind of been changing or trickling in there of maybe not doing that anymore?
Are they not?
I think right now, they'd like to, they'd like to go through and do some flood studies to kind of understand where the exact floodplain is. That'll kind of define what that is. And then the city, you know, has some, we have some questions on, you know, just the parkland itself, you know, what's that going to look like? What are the exact boundaries? So that's why it's written the kind of the way it is. If they choose not to do the donation, then they would have to go through like a normal project and go to the Parks Board and pay all of the fees.
Because to your, to councilmember Zuniga's point, the biggest part of me supporting this project is because of the dedication that I see during the plans. That's, and the water features, so I would like to make sure that that is stated, that that amount of land will be dedicated to parks and for public access. Otherwise, you know, that makes me rethink my decision.
Well, we have a couple more meetings set up, so we'll make sure that we get those.
So is there any way that we can postpone this item?
Your prerogative.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until the meeting for the 19th.
Second, that?
All right, the motion's made by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga that we postpone this item. Is there a discussion on the motion? If we postpone this item, we will also be postponing the development agreement. So we're just going to be right back at this exact same spot at the next time. And the reason is, we used to have development agreements run concurrently with first reading of zoning, and that was what was actually creating a situation where we were entitling a project before zoning it. So it would come back on second reading after a development agreement was passed on first reading. And if we didn't pass the zoning on second reading, so everything is being very strategically done so that we get an initial look at something like this. We can take a first vote, which is non-binding, and we move the project forward so that we're taking all the votes together at one time, and you have it all before you. So what you're asking for is the process that's in place. And if we postpone this item, then we'll just have first reading again and second, the development agreement will get moved back.
Can I rescind my motion to postpone the item?
Is that amenable to the second?
I can, I can change it. If that's what we're doing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17.
Second.
My motion by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilor Rizzo, that we approve, oh, actually, you can't make the motions, none of them, because it has a public hearing. The agenda was already, all right, so we're going to say that those are all invalid motions because we have to have the public hearing first. If there are, I'm sorry, if there are no objections, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right.
Are they willing to say?
They're welcome to. I'd rather them come up not in the public hearing so we can engage them, if you want to.
Yeah, just to answer, maybe make us feel a little more at ease about...
Something's there, it's on the record.
Yeah. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Let's go ahead and get the motion, and then we'll bring them up. Go back through the process.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17.
Second.
All right, it's a motion by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 17. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Zuniga.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries 7-0. I'd like to object to final passage, and we'll bring back for second reading along with the development agreement and hopefully some good answers to our questions. All right, is there any further discussion? Let's see, is that it? No, we got two more. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 20, receive a report, hold a discussion, and consider casting a total of 195 votes allocated to the city of Kyle to one candidate or distribute among multiple candidates for five interim positions on the Hays County Central Appraisal District Board. Mr. Mohit.
Grab, help. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Prevez Mohit, City's Director of Finance. The item before you is a pretty straightforward item. The chief appraiser of the Hays County Central Appraisal District recently sent us an official ballot for the, to elect five interim directors to serve on the appraisal district's board of directors. The reason it is, the reason it is interim is because Senate Bill 2, when it changed property tax regulations, it also mandated that all appraisal districts shall now be comprised of nine elected members or boards members. I have a very brief presentation, which I'll wrap it up in less than seven and a half minutes. So the nine directors will be selected, five will be appointed by the taxing units, we're one of the taxing units in the district, three to be elected by majority vote at the general election by the voters of the county, and one ex-officio, which will be the Hays County Tax Assessor Collector. The deadline to submit the official ballot to the chief appraiser is December 15th. The city council's vote must be submitted in the form of a resolution adopted by the city council. The term of office, the initial term is for a one-year term from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024. After that, there will be another call for nominations in August 2024 for terms beginning in January 2025. Eventually, after that, the terms will be staggering, beginning January 1st of every other even-numbered year. The total number of votes allocated to the city of Kyle is 195 or 3.9% of the total votes. There are 5,000 votes allocated amongst all the taxing jurisdictions, and the allocation is based on the 2022 actual tax levy for each taxing jurisdiction. The voting process, city council may cast all 195 votes to one candidate, or you may choose to distribute among any number of candidates listed on the official ballot. Votes can only be cast for candidates listed on the official ballot. There's no provision for write-in candidates. Vote must be determined by adopting a resolution, and the resolution must be... be determined by adopting a resolution, and the resolution must be submitted by December fifteenth. The candidates as listed on the official ballot are Jeffrey Alstock, Joe Castillo, Nathan Cross, Jane Houston, Nora Puente, Meredith Shawway. Here are the options for city council to consider. Option one, approve a motion to cast cities' all one hundred ninety five allocated votes to a candidate selected by council from the list of candidates. Option two, approve a motion to distribute cities' hundred ninety five votes among multiple candidates listed on the ballot. Option three, which is staff recommendation, approve a motion to accept staff recommendation to cast cities' hundred ninety five allocated votes for candidate Jane Houston as listed on the official ballot. And then, of course, option four, we can have no action taken or postpone. With that, I believe I'm under seven and a half minutes.
Well, Perves, like I said last time, historically, you know, the voted, the allotments for the city for the school appraisal district is nowhere near enough to carry the vote. Historically, we've partnered with jurisdictions who represent the city of Kyle, namely Hays C I S D, because they carry the lion's share and have supported the school districts ballots that they've cast, which in the past was Abel Tenorio, and I believe potentially there are others. So that's just the same commentary as last time. And just for the context, that's what we've done in the past. So does anybody have any thoughts on this? Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah. Do we know where each person lives or is from?
No, the ballot does not show that, but I did ask the appraisal district if they would share with me who nominated, which jurisdiction nominated these candidates. I can go down the list real quick for you.
That would be great. Thank you, Perves.
Sure. So Jeffrey Alstock is nominated by Dripping Springs I S D, Joe Castillo by San Marcos C I S D, Nathan Cross, Wimberly I S D, Jane Houston, city of San Marcos, Nora Puente, Hays C I S D, and Meredith Shawway, Hays C I S D. And in in addition to that, Joe Castillo is serving on the current board. Jane Houston is also serving on the current board, and so is Meredith Shawway.
Thoughts? Councilor Heiser.
Do I want to do that or not?
Scary smile.
And so what happens if we don't take action?
Nothing.
Does, what is the status quo now, I suppose?
So the school districts most likely will will have their candidates elected.
Okay, so our votes as of right now sit with the the school district representative?
Because they have the most allocated votes.
But you have two people running for that district right now, that were nominated by the district. You got Nora Puente and Meredith Shaw, correct?
Yes, by Hays C I S D.
So you have two candidates.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to approve option number one, which I believe was to split the votes between two candidates, or was that option B? It's not up there.
Option two was if you wanted to have multiple candidates.
I mean, like, are we supposed to like bring them before us or something? I mean, obviously not, but.
We, we have no say.
So option B to split the kids, to split our votes between the two candidates from Hays C I S D.
You can split it amongst any five.
No, I'll second that. So the motion is to split our votes between Nora Puente and Meredith Shaw? Is that what your motion was?
Yeah, the, yeah, the two bottom names.
All right, is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Zuniga.
I'd like to make a motion to accept option three and just follow the staff's recommendation for Jane Houston.
All right.
I just made a motion.
Yeah, it's a motion to amend. So it's essentially what it is. We have a vote, we have a motion for one. Yeah, I do not care. It's not worth the, any of the public drama over trying to make this decision, because our votes do not count. It's ceremonial at best.
So we have a motion already for the two school boards. Did we have a second on that?
We did, but we, but you, he can mo, before we vote, he can motion to, he can motion to amend.
He was bringing forward a motion. So we're gonna, if we're gonna follow the rules, let's follow the rules.
Okay, but I'm not gonna call the question right away in order to do that while he's trying to.
I understand that, but we've got a set of presidents for following the rules, and let's do that.
Okay.
Can I hear the motion again?
So the initial, the
I don't know, the one that
The original one that counts.
All right, so there's an initial motion to split our votes between Nora Puente and Meredith Shaw. That motion was seconded. There is a desire to amend the motion and call for a vote to make our, to cast our votes for Jane Houston. So that, the the motion wasn't quite made to amend, but I'm gonna give him a chance to do that now. And then what we will do is take an amendment vote on Jane Houston, if there's a second. And then if that amendment passes, then Jane Houston is now the official motion. We'll have to take a vote on that again. So that's, it gets convoluted with motions and amendments. But that's it. Is that what you want to do?
Well, if no one's gonna support the motion that I made.
Yeah, I do.
I put it out there to follow staff's recommendation itself.
I would second that motion, but there is a motion. So is there an amendment to the motion?
Are you admitting? So just saying, I'd like to make
I'd like to amend the first motion to not
To include.
To include the option three, which is to accept the staff recommendation to cast cities' all one hundred ninety five votes for candidate Jane Houston.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion to amend the motion to replace Nora Puente and Meredith Shaw with Jane Houston.
I don't think that's what what the motion was. I I really think the the original motion was to split the votes. Now he's taking all the votes.
That's right.
And so that would be a totally different, we would have to recant the first motion from splitting the votes, because you're doing away with them, to do this, his motion.
Well, I think there's a lot of ways to look at it. I generally view amendments as stacking on top of original motions, according to Robert's rules. And so if there's an emotion on the table, and then there's a motion to amend, the amended motion gets voted on first. If it is passed, it becomes the original motion, in which case we would vote for it again. But you're, there, we all have the ability to vote. Another third option could be to just split them all three, and let's move on, because this does not matter that much. And I I'm not sure why staff made a recommendation for one versus the other. But is there a rationale for it, or just?
Yes, sir, there is a rationale, which is Jane Hugh represents city of San Marcos, so the vested interest of a city represented will be very similar to ours. As compared to school districts.
That's one theory. I mean, that could be the case. I'm not sure. But all right, so the motion to amend, but I'm, what I'm saying is, let's just cast them all three and then be done, or let's just go where we're at. All right, roll call vote on the original, or on the amended motion, roll call vote on Jane Houston.
Rizzo.
This is messed up. I'm gonna have to vote nay, because I think this is just the wrong process.
Parsley.
Aye.
Zuniga.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Nay.
Heiser.
No.
Tobias.
No.
I'm sorry, nay.
Nay.
Bradshaw.
Nay.
All right, amendment fails. So now we'll take a roll call vote on the original motion to split between the two school district candidates.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Heiser.
Yes.
Rizzo.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Aye.
Tobias.
Aye.
Parsley.
Aye.
Zuniga.
No.
All right, motion carries six to one.
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome. Next up is agenda item number twenty one. Consider impossible
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, postpone that item to the next meeting. All right, so any one object? It's his item. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.